Alive with the chair.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northborough Board of Selectmen meeting for March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I will read some introductory announcements. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair the board. Uh, this open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I'll go around the virtual room and make sure we can all hear and be heard. Uh, let's see, just in the order that is on my screen, Scott Rogers.
President.
Kristen Wixted.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
And Jason Perro.
Present.
Excellent. We also have a number of important staff members with us again in the order I see on my screen. Fair Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
We have Assistant Town Administrator Beckham Ekins.
Present.
DPW Director Scott Sharpatier preparing for tonight's storm, tomorrow's storm.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
Town Administrator John Kader.
Present.
And a special guest tonight, Finance Director Jason Little.
Present.
Welcome, everyone. We also have North Row Cable with us tonight, providing technical assistance. Uh, no further ado, let's uh, get on with our meeting. First item, as always, is a public comment. If there are members or public input, if there are members of the audience who wish to speak to something, primarily something not on the agenda. Um, appreciate if you could raise your virtual hand. I do see one hand up, but I suspect this is someone for a further agenda item. Right, I'm gonna, just to be sure. Uh, Kate Donahue, I'm gonna bring you in just in case you're speaking to something else. Hi, Kate, you had your hand up for public comment. Uh, that may have been for uh, for the agenda item that you're scheduled, but I want to make sure you recognize just in case.
Um, I'm not speaking on that. I'm not sure why my hand is up.
That is perfectly fine. You're, you're welcome anytime. I'll put you back into the attendees list and we'll bring you in very soon. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands raised, going once, going twice. And we will move on with our agenda, which should be some meeting minutes. I apologize that I'm not on the right page. We do, we do have some meeting minutes for February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh, Julianne.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And Kristen.
Abstain.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor with one abstention. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is we have discussion regarding the Northborough Legislative Priorities with Senator Robin Kennedy and Representatives Meg Kilcoin and Kate Donahue. I will bring everybody in. Everybody that, let's see, I see Kate. Brought into panelist. Wish this was alphabetical order. Chief Printo, here's Robin Kennedy.
Yeah, Robyn's all the way, all the way down bottom. I didn't see, I didn't see Meg yet, though.
Okay. Meg, if you are on the line and I'm not seeing you, feel free to raise your virtual hand. You know, we've got Robin and Kate. Or shall I say Senator Kennedy and Representative Donahue, welcome, welcome, welcome to our meeting and congratulations to both of you. This is, I believe, the first time you're both joining us for um, a Board of Selectmen meeting, soon to be Select Board meeting in the town of Northborough. I hope things are, are settling in well. Uh, and now I see Representative Kilcoin, I'm going to lower the hand and promote to a panelist.
Already brought her in, Mister Chair.
Okay, great. Probably both did. Representative Kilcoin, welcome, welcome. All right, so we're all here. John, do you want to kick off this, uh, this part of the meeting?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, welcome. We appreciate you, as always, taking the time to come in and meet with us. This for us is a very important meeting. It's a chance for us to sit down with you all and make sure that, um, as a, as a community, we're communicating to you about the clear uh, priorities of the town of Northborough, things that you as legislators can help us out with. Um, in advance of the meeting and for viewers at home, uh, we did provide a, a letter. We sent it to the governor as well as our legislative delegation that's available on the webpage under the Board of Selectmen's, uh, meeting, um, site. Um, so I'm not going to read the, uh, entire letter to you tonight, but what I'd like to do is kind of hit on a couple of highlights. And really, the, the, the key is, we gave this to you ahead of time, so we're very interested tonight in hearing from each of you on your thoughts about these priorities that we've laid out for you. Um, I'm gonna break them up into two primary categories. One, we'll talk about chapter ninety, and then two, we're gonna talk about state aid. Um, chapter ninety, uh, is a transportation bond. For those of you at home that aren't familiar, uh, it is a, uh, typically about two, two hundred million dollars across the entire state. And, uh, the result is that Northborough gets a little over five hundred thousand dollars a year in transportation funding from the state to take care of its roads. Now, we know from our pavement management plan that we need to spend at least one point one million minimally each year uh, to keep our roads from deteriorating into worse shape. Uh, so that program that we put in place, the one point one million is about five hundred thousand dollars a chapter ninety from the state. Thank you very much for that. Uh, it's about three hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget and then another three hundred thousand dollars from the, from the capital improvement program. Just to explain why this is so critical to us, like every, uh, New England town, uh, infrastructure crumbling is a real issue. So our, this is roadways, sidewalks, uh, drainage projects, bridges, they're all culverts, these are all very critical things to the town of Northborough. And the chapter ninety program at the state level has been pretty much level funded since twenty twelve at two hundred million dollars. And, uh, as you've read in the, in the letter that we sent you, uh, construction inflation increased by sixty-five point seven percent since twenty twelve. Just to keep pace with inflation, that program should be three hundred and thirty million dollars statewide. So what's happened is over the years, um, it's remained static and we've had essentially less buying power. Uh, the town has continued to do its share on our side. We're not just relying on the state. This is a partnership, but clearly, infrastructure benefits the economic activity of the Commonwealth as a whole. What we're seeking is your support. I know the governor's filed a, a bill, uh, for two hundred million a year, which was extremely disappointing. Uh, not only is it two hundred million for fiscal twenty twenty-four, but, uh, for fiscal twenty twenty-five as well. Um, it's, it's woefully inadequate. Uh, this is our top priority, as it is one of the top priority priorities of the Mass Municipal Association. Um, in the letter, you can see the graph. We can see, we can show you exactly the improvement in our roads with some additional money. And, uh, as you know, to maintain a roadway, uh, once it's failed, it's about five times the cost to fix it as it is to maintain it while it's in reasonably good repair. Uh, so that is our top priority. We're hoping that you will support us, uh, in that request, uh, for additional chapter ninety funding. The second, uh, general category is state aid. So for Northborough, we've seen about a one to one in, one to two percent increase in state aid over the last seven years or so. And, uh, we haven't seen any real growth in terms of the revenue sharing component. And what's resulted is, if I go all the way back to two thousand and three, state aid was a little over thirteen percent of our operating budget that we funded our schools and our police and a fire and a DPW. You fast forward to today and it's about eight percent, and it's a solid decline, as is shown in the graph in the letter that we sent you, about how that has just been a diminishing share of, of our operating budget. And the reason is, is state aid's only going up one or two percent, but our budget's going up three or four percent. What's happened is, over time, there's been a shift onto the local tax bill, and that's been felt by pretty much every community in Massachusetts. But I want to hone in on just very briefly where the crux of the issue is for us. And that is, out of our state aid, about seventy-three percent of what we get is in chapter seventy education funding. So I'm just gonna read a couple of statistics, uh, that might drive home the point of what's happening in Northborough specifically. So the state has, uh, adopted the Student Opportunity Act that diverts significant funding to districts in need, and we're not taking issue with that. We think it's great that districts in need should receive additional assistance. The problem is, almost all of the revenues are being diverted to those and student and communities like Northborough are being left behind. That's why we're seeing our state aid as a percentage of the operating budget just declining over the years. But here's a couple of statistics. So the state, under the governor's, uh, proposed budget, is going to increase chapter, uh, seventy funding statewide by five hundred and eighty-six million dollars roughly. Of that, seventy-one percent is going to thirty-two districts. Uh, another sixty-seven percent, another two hundred and twelve of all the districts are left sharing about forty-one million dollars of that increase. So, uh, the issue for us and what's been laid out in the, uh, in the letter for you is the minimum aid per student. And first of all, I should back up. I want to thank the legislature uh, publicly, because last year fiscal twenty-three, the governor left that number at thirty dollars per student, and the legislature increased it to sixty. That's why we saw a little bit more state aid last year. The problem is with the Student Opportunity Act, all the revenue, seventy-one percent are being siphoned off, going to a very small handful of uh, districts that are in need. And the balance of the dish, of, of the, uh, districts across the Commonwealth are getting minimum aid. And that's what's causing the disparity. And so what we're asking your support for is to move that minimum aid per student from the thirty dollars in the governor's budget to the hundred dollars that the Mass Municipal Association, uh, has been requesting. We got a little, we got closer with the legislature last year, and again, I, I can't, I can't say enough, uh, about the partnership that we've had with our delegation. I know we have two new members here today. Um, but we've always felt very well supported, uh, uh, with regard to these priorities, because again, we have needs in our school system, just like those districts that are in need have. And the issue that we face, as I've said, is we're just seeing our tax bills going up, and as a partner, you know, that share from the state is diminishing over, over time. Uh, I'm not sure if the school superintendent is on the call or not. I believe he was going to, to come in. Um, but a couple of other primary accounts, and I know that historically or publicly, you've all, I believe, spoken in support of, uh, the special education circuit breaker funding and the regional transportation. You know, when, uh, when communities regionalized, the state committed to, to paying for a hundred percent of that transportation. Historically, it's never gotten much above eighty-five, uh, percent. So those are key areas. And then last but not least, the unrestricted general government aid, which is mostly our lot, the lottery funding over the years. Um, you know, we're looking for a, a little stronger partnership there in terms of that share of the, of the revenues. So those are the key, those are the two key areas that I wanted to focus on. Again, the point of this evening is to really hear from the three of you. Um, but in addition to those two primary areas, we wanted to highlight a couple of programs that we're hoping you will also support. Uh, continuing support for the Community Compact Program. We're not sure what's gonna happen to that program with the new administration, but it's been an excellent source of best practices funding for municipalities. We've taken advantage of it for an MISIT study. We'd like to continue doing that. Um, again, continued funding for, uh, municipal vulnerabilities, green communities, uh, initiatives. Uh, extending the open meeting law. And then one I want to just touch on, uh, there's a couple of bills, uh, there's, uh, a Senate, Senate Bill twenty-two fifty-seven and House thirty-six seventy-five. These would create a building authority for municipal buildings. So right now, I'm not sure how many people know this, but we can get state grants to build schools, libraries, but nothing for fire stations or town halls. Um, so, uh, that bill has been, uh, brought forward again. We would really strongly encourage you to look at that. It requires a funding source. But, um, but it's difficult for us that we can get money for a library building project, but not a fire station. We have a fire station project on deck. Um, the last thing, there's a couple of other things in here, but the last thing I want to draw your attention to is, uh, periodically, we hear from you. There's an opportunity sometimes to get some earmarks. I want to thank Representative, uh, Megan Kilcoin. Uh, in the last cycle, got us fifty thousand dollars for the Lincoln Street Culvert Project, which was very helpful. It offset some of the escalation that we saw in that. Um, but we want to give you a couple of things. So if you have an opportunity to put a, to put an earmark in, particularly for an infrastructure project for you, uh, we've included, um, we've included a couple here. There's the fire station building project that's coming up. Uh, we have a dam removal, uh, that's needed. Uh, we have a sidewalk repair, uh, project, and we have a significant drainage repair project that's, uh, in a whole, in a neighborhood where all the drainage, it's not for a lack of maintenance, but the drainage due to poor construction when that subdivision was put in, needs to be replaced. So those are sort of the highlights of, of the letter. We're happy to speak to, uh, any of the individual items that, or to give any more information. But really, as I said, the point here through the chair is to hear from the three of you regarding primarily, you know, the chapter ninety and the state aid and the various accounts associated with that. We're really interested in knowing where you stand on those, um, on those sources for us. So with that, I'll give it back to the chair and we can answer any questions regarding the communications that we've provided.
John, thank you for the introduction. Um, you mentioned, uh, Superintendent Martino may, may wish to speak. Uh, I believe I see him online. If you would like to, yes, you've raised your hand, you thought ahead, and I am going to promote you to a panelist. Greg, if you could, uh, turn on your audio and your video if you wish. There you are, sir. Welcome to our meeting.
Well, good evening and thank you again for your advocacy and support, the town of Northborough. I won't repeat everything John, um, just mentioned, but I will add one item. And that is universal free meals for students. That does expire at the end of this year, as you well know, and just want to advocate for that program continuing into fiscal year twenty-four. That has been an invaluable program to our families and students, and we hope to see it continue in uh, the upcoming year. And that is the only additional advocacy that I would add that, uh, John already went over.
Thank you, Greg. All right, and now it is up to our three fine legislatures. Would anyone like to volunteer to, to talk first?
I can jump in first. This isn't my first video here, so I'll, I'll, I'll bite the bullet. Uh, first off, John, I wanted to, uh, thank you not only for putting together that packet. It's incredibly helpful for us to have that so early in the year and prior to this meeting. It gives us a sense of where the town is looking at and, and sort of helps us put into context some of the work that we're doing at the State House. So thank you, but also I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for your service to this community, uh, over the years. I, I think this may be the last time we get to do one of these sessions where you serve as town administrator. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment before we dig into some of these issues to thank you for your service um, on behalf of not just the colleagues here, but also for those many legislators that you've served under as well, um, or who have served with you, I should say. Um, we, your work has not gone unnoticed by us and, and you truly do make our jobs easier. Um, and have done a fantastic job at making sure that, uh, Northborough is front and center and that those priorities aren't forgotten. And I do want to give a quick shout out also to Select Board members Rogers and Jason, uh, Perrow. I know, um, this may also be the last time we get to do this with you as well. Um, and it's been wonderful to work with the two of you. Um, I'm sure it won't be the last time we see you, but maybe in this setting. So thank you both for the service that you've provided, uh, the town also. Um, so with that said, um, I think that, um, I'll jump into it. Um, uh, Senator Rob, uh, Kennedy and, and Representative Donahue and I were chatting a little bit earlier, um, just about some of the letters and the issues that you gave us too, and, and your timing is, is impeccable. Uh, today, I was a little late because I was coming from UMass Amherst, where the Joint Committees on Ways and Means in the House and Senate held a hearing on local aid and education, um, which covered actually many of the issues that you, uh, you spoke about tonight, uh, or this evening. Um, including, uh, issues pertaining to chapter seventy, um, as well as unrestricted, uh, government aid. Um, I just don't wanna, I don't know if we wanna maybe go over every single item that you spoke of, just to, but I will just take a moment to say that right now, the House and Senate are in the process of writing their state budget. A lot of that will come, will dictate what we know in terms of local aid numbers at the town of Northborough and other communities are going to get. Um, we've heard, I, I, we, we heard today, actually, from MMA on some of the same issues you raised regarding unrestricted government aid. Um, I don't know what the House or Senate will come out in terms of where it's going to be reg, uh, in relation to Governor Healy's budget. Those are some of the numbers that we're currently working off of right now, but this is a process. So right now, I, the House and Senate are taking their time to really vet these, these numbers and see where we stand in terms of either matching those or going beyond. Um, so we'll know in a few weeks sort of where the House is heading in terms of what to expect with chapter seventy and unrestricted aid. Um, where it is a new governor, I hesitate to say exactly what, what we can expect. I know historically, under Governor Baker, we never went below what his proposals were for chapter seventy and local aid. Um, my hope is that would be this case with Governor Healy, um, but I just wanna be cautious before making any sort of definitive statement, because I know how important it is to know for you to rely on what numbers that we give you. Um, chapter ninety, uh, you've been a consistent advocate on that, and I know it's, it's, and, and I, and I hear it from all of our communities. I know all of us do. Um, last week, the House and, the Joint Committee on Transportation held a hearing on chapter ninety, uh, where they heard from some of your peers in, uh, municipal government as well as, uh, uh, varie, uh, members of, of various city governments. I know that we, I think we all know that transportation infrastructure is in desperate need of, of investments. I know, um, that there has been some talk over whether or not we need to revamp chapter ninety as a whole. Um, you know, the intent of chapter ninety was never to necessarily cover some of the bigger projects that we, we are in need of these municipalities. Um, so whether or not we see an increase in chapter ninety this year or try to find other ways to support our municipalities in this work, I don't know right now. Um, but I can say that we, we do understand the, the necessity of trying to get the towns and municipalities some support in, in fixing some of these infrastructure needs. Um, and I also want to thank Superintendent, uh, oh, I, I think he, he jumped off. Um, but on the universal school meals, that was in your letter last year. You guys, y, the entire community has been a incredible support for that, and, um, we have covered it, or we're working on finalizing the supplemental budget to make sure that we have enough to cover the cost of school meals for the rest of the, uh, school year, and we'll be discussing that, I think, in terms of both as, it is a budget priority and whether or not we can see that as a long-term, uh, priority going forward. I feel like I'm jumping all over the place, so I, I might pause here and turn it over to some of my colleagues so they can, uh, say hello as well, and then uh, whatever I think the chair would decide and be best to proceed, we can either kind of have some, open it up for some questions or cover some of the areas that maybe we didn't hit on in the letter itself. I have it on, I'm trying to save paper, so I have it on my phone right now. So the letter, I'm, I'm like flipping back and forth between all the different points, but, um, but I, I was just trying to hit on some of the ones that we heard recently, um, and just giving you an update on where uh, the legislature is. And, and like I said, we're still a little bit early in that process, so I apologize if it, we can't give some of the concrete, uh, responses that I know you guys are looking for. But, um, like I said, the timing of this is perfect because this allows us to have the tools that we need, uh, when we go into some of these budget debates to highlight what the town of Northborough is experiencing, uh, along with the other communities in, in, uh, central Massachusetts. So so I think that covers it for now, and I'll kick it over to Rep. Donahue and Senator Kennedy.
Volunteers between the two of you. All right, Kate, unmuted, you win.
So, um, I wanted to, like, um, like my colleague Rep. Kilcoin, do you want to, um, wish, uh, John Kudair good luck? I haven't had the same opportunity to work with him, but I'm, um, excited for you. I also wanted to thank, uh, Select Board Members, um, Perrow and Rogers for your service. And did want to say that, uh, um, one of the items that I do feel strongly about that was mentioned both by this, um, the town manager and in the in, in the letter is extending the open meeting law. That's something that we got an update on just the past couple of days, and I know I strongly support extending the open meeting law to allow virtual and hybrid meetings. I believe it's given great opportunity for people to participate. And it's another thing that I've advocated for during my campaign, and I've found Don is a cosponsor, as, um, Rep. Kilcoin mentioned, the Universal School Meals. I think it had, makes students healthier. We cut down on administrative costs, and I've supported making that permanent. I don't have too much to add. Um, I'm not sure Rep. Kilcoin mentioned the circuit breaker, but we have been hearing about that from all our communities, and we understand the challenges that, that it's bringing to our communities and we, um, I think I speak for both my colleagues when I say we will be advocating for this. We, for relief, we can't, I can't make any promises. And I've looked over the earmarks. I'm learning about the, I'm learning all about this process. It's very new to me. And I will make one last shout out to Rep. Kilcoin, who has been a great mentor to me, and, um, I'm learning from her, and hopefully I can be as successful as she was in getting earmarks. Although they are managing expect, expectations for first years that we may or may not be able to get what we've requested, but I can promise you that I will be advocating for you and the other communities that I represent. I'll turn it over to, um, Senator Kennedy or to the chairman.
Jump in. Go ahead. Great. Well, thank you so much. And, uh, the, the best part of going last is I get to say by and large ditto, uh, certainly. You know, also on behalf of the, the Senate, I guess we'll extend, uh, certainly my appreciation for Town Administrator Kudair and, and even just the conversations that we had early on, soon after I got elected, as I'm trying to spend some time and better understand the communities in the district and same to, as well to Select Board Members Perrow and Rogers. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to work together, but I appreciate your service to the community and, and one of the, the blessings, as I'm finding, is somebody who's, uh, lived in Worcester all my life that uh, I'm so, uh, impressed and admire, uh, those who step up in, in community leadership in the town. So thank you uh, for, for doing so and for serving your communities for so long and you know, I do, and I'm very fortunate, uh, you know, I keep hearing from folks, you know, and I apologize for those that, uh, are disappointed that redistricting took Senator Eldridge out of Northborough. Uh, but I hope for those that I very much live up to, uh, his leadership. And for those who, uh, maybe were okay with it, then hopefully I'll be carving a new path as well. So um, I'm very excited to have Northborough as part of this, this new district, uh, just to give a sense. In the Senate, my district is sixty percent of the city of Worcester. But as well as the towns of Boylston, West Boylston, Berlin, Bolton, and Northborough. So I'm very committed, even though the majority of the district is the city of Worcester, of making sure that uh, I'm a presence in the communities, in the towns, as well as making sure that the towns are, are represented in the Senate side uh, in, in the State House as well. And I'm very fortunate to have two phenomenal colleagues in the House that uh, we've already hit the ground running, working together on several initiatives as they, as they both mess, mess, mentioned, excuse me, as well. And to that point, and one of the things that, that hasn't brought up, but I, I think it's important that we're, we're talking about as we're having all of these conversations, uh, and that's something that's been troubling to me and, and, and making sure that as a delegation, uh, we're staying together is to make sure that in all these decisions that there's regional equity. Uh, you know, as we look at things like the new, um, millionaire's tax or the, the fair share amendment, and we look at the distribution of those funds, I appreciate that the governor very clearly articulated uh, where those funds will be distributed so that we know how they'll be spent on education and transportation. I am confident the legislature will be following suit. Uh, but it's important, you know, and I'm, I'm somewhat dismayed at the, the lack of, of equity in some of the, the distribution of those funds, particularly on the transportation side. Um, and that's something that I'm committed to as we look at our regional transportation and transit systems, uh, that we are continuing to make sure that we're that we are continuing to make sure that we're fighting for equity in, in the distribution in our communities, including if that, that means a future conversation about Chapter ninety formula funding, et cetera. So you know, not to, you know, I'm happy to kind of as well get into the weeds on some of these specific questions or, or specific areas. I too am navigating my way through the, the, this process and looking forward to being able to highlight some of the, the earmark priorities that the town has as well as some of the systemic changes. You know, it's, it's interesting having recently come off the campaign trail and into this position that so much of what's in the letter that you're advocating for are the same issues that I was hearing on the doors that you know that the community is talking about. It's the sidewalks. It's looking at the major development projects that are happening and making sure that the roads that lead up to those projects remain stable and strong for the community. So I, I appreciate that there are very large price tags to these and I think that's something that we're very much interested collectively in, in working over time with some new leadership, but certainly with, with Kristin and Mitch and Julianne and continuing to work with you to make sure that we are making sure that we're delivering the resources back to the community. So and then again, I also wanna echo like I appreciate the superintendent jumping in to make that pitch for Universal School Meals. No question, it's something that should be a continued resource that certainly benefits our families, benefits our community and benefits our students so that students don't have to feel any type of stigma by, by selecting, but just knowing that every child in our community has access to, to lunch at school. So I certainly am in supportive. We, we, as they mentioned, as my colleagues mentioned, we passed it through the stuff and looking forward to moving legislation forward that would help make it permanent in all our communities. So with that, I'm happy to, unless you want me to go into anything more specific, otherwise happy to open up to, to conversation or questions.
Thank you, Senator Kennedy. Open it up to, to any questions or comments from board members. Kristin, I guess I your hand up first.
Yeah. Hi, hi. Thanks everyone for coming. This year is my second year having this meeting and it's much more fun this year because I actually know all of you and I've met you all in person and it's fun. So thank you for coming. My one point that seems to, people always talk to me about is trucks because it was sort of part of why I got interested in town politics in the first place. And a lot of the, um, this is a Worcester issue as well as a Northborough issue, as well as North Andover, as well as Milford. I know a lot of your colleagues are probably have a lot of residents in their various towns who are concerned just with the the e-commerce moving into all the small towns and the cities like Worcester. Wherever there's a highway, they're gonna wanna move close and everybody's having traffic and safety issues because all of a sudden there are eighteen wheelers on roads that there didn't used to be eighteen wheelers on. So, and I, I know about North Andover because that's where I grew up and they just got a new Amazon facility there. It's not just Amazon, it's FedEx and it's, it's everything else also. So I just hope the state legislature is just paying attention to ways to keep traffic and safety issues on their minds as far as eighteen wheelers on town roads where there didn't used to be at least quite so many eighteen wheelers, if any at all. And it's, it's a, it's a concern for so, so many people and I just would like you to keep us in the loop if there, anyone ever wants to have a conversation about that in another town or you ever start working on anything, I'm, I'm always personally happy to chat about it. But anyway, that's just something that a lot of people write to me personally about. So I wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
I would just say, you know, if there's specific legislation that you know of, that you think that we should be aware of and that goes for anybody listening out in the public too, please feel free to reach out to our offices to make sure that we are aware of it. There are six thousand bills filed every session or more covering a variety of issues. So, you know, we, we, we try our best to know as, of as many as we can, but oftentimes we may not be aware of a, of how a bill might impact our community unless we, we hear from the public. So I would just, if you, if you're hearing a lot, this elect board member Kristin, it just feel free to reach out to us if you know of any specific impending legislation that you think might be relevant, we'd be happy to take a look.
Great, thanks.
Julia.
Thank you, Kristin.
Oh, sorry, Representative Donahue, did you wanna say something?
I just was thanking Kristin for, for sharing her thoughts. And we will definitely be keeping an eye on it. It's an issue that I've been reading about and very cognizant of the impact on our communities, especially Northborough and also Westborough, Southborough, Birmingham.
So I, I will take it upon myself to email all of you the number of Senator Brownsburgers proposal as well as Representative Steve Owens of Watertown has some proposed legislation about, it's called automated traffic enforcement, which is basically cameras at intersections. And the bill seemed very benign. It's a twenty-five dollar fine if the camera catches you, doesn't go to your insurance. It's, it, it can be appealed and it's, you know, it's something that if, I'm sure many of you who have traveled out of state have been in areas where, where there are cameras and, and you know, they're probably pretty effective. And not only that, but your GPS will alert you when, when you are approaching an intersection that has this. So I just was, so yes, so to, to capitalize on what Kristin said, and you know, it seems as though communities have to work together on this issue. And, and also I think we all need to kind of pay attention to the innovations coming down the line. If it's drones or, you know, self-driving trucks or whatever it is, it's, seems like, like they're moving forward very fast. So I'll just conclude by saying thank you very much for your service and coming here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add too, I think it's incredibly helpful, the information that you're sharing with us in terms of the impact of these facilities in particular. I think, and you know, I say this recognizing that, you know, I certainly don't have the ability alone or in, in probably even collectively. But I think we also need to be having the conversation with these entities, these multi-billion dollar corporations that are taking up good amount of space into our communities. You know, I, I had the opportunity, I was working for Lieutenant Governor Tim Murray when CSX came into the city of Worcester. And because they were having a, they were gaining a benefit by being able to build their new transit space in Worcester that they recognized with some communication and partnership that they were a valued partner in there and then in turn were able to contribute to the community as well. Fixing sidewalks, they rebuilt one of the two ninety ramps to make more, it make it easier to get from their property on to two ninety. And I think that collectively, we need to be able to have these conversations with some of these corporations as well, so that they're also partners in our communities. So it's good, I, I say all that, it's big conversations to be had, certainly. But I, it's helpful to, to really understand where some of the, the impacts and the costs relating to making our communities welcoming to these facilities so that we in turn, as we have the opportunity to do so, can be engaging for them to, to hopefully become good partners in that.
It appears we may have lost the chair from the meeting.
So I'll step in. Jason, would you like to have, say something?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, first of all, just let me thank Representative Killcoin and Senator Kennedy and Representative Donahue for your very kind words. Certainly appreciated. Representative Killcoin, we appreciate the support that you provided for the town during your period of service and we look forward to similar support from Senator Kennedy and Representative Donahue. One question I have is some of the items, in particularly probably the Chapter ninety and some of the school funding items. You know, over time, they have suffered in terms of real dollar purchasing power. Level funding is never level funding in that regard. I'm just curious whether you have any perspective to offer about Governor Healy's approach to these issues or her support for these issues, you know, relative to Governor Baker and his administration. Is there any reason to be optimistic that there might be more assistance forthcoming for those particular items?
Yeah, and I, I think I'll just jump in here because we just were having, like I said, a hearing on this very issue. I will say, you know, and, and I do wanna caveat this, that this is tied up in the Student Opportunity Act as well. So so some of this is dictated by what the legislature did back in twenty nineteen. That said, what we have seen with House One is that these do represent the highest levels of Chapter seventy we've seen proposed in a long time. It's not to say Governor Baker wasn't supportive of school funding or locally, the administrations certainly were and they were great partners throughout that timeframe, but it was heartening to see with her first budget, the governor made sure to, to, that we were seeing even higher increases, both in Chapter seventy and local aid. Included in that, and I do wanna preface it by saying we are aware that this is not an immediate fix, but she has proposed a hundred percent reimbursement for circuit breaker in addition to ninety percent reimbursement for regional school transportation. You know, we've had this conversation a lot about regional school transportation. Regional schools have specific needs and funding requirements that some of the singles town or community districts don't have. And so I hope to see that reflected in the House budget as well, given the amount of regional schools. And this, I'm just speaking for my district as well. I know Senator Kennedy has and Representative Donahue have maybe quite different makeups, but I have a lot of regional schools in my, in my district. So I think those are just a few examples that I can think of off the top of my head that I think do point to some positive signs, hopefully in terms of getting some funding back. But I don't wanna, but I do wanna make sure that I am respecting the points made earlier by John Kudair regarding how some of that funding is broken, breaking down. I do think that we will continue to have conversations about education funding on a broader scale. And, and hopefully in the next few weeks, just on a short-term answer, we'll be able to give you some more definitive numbers on that for the next school cycle also.
Thank you very much.
And if I just might add a couple of points, I, I do think, you know, as was mentioned by my colleagues earlier, that particularly the special education circuit breaker, that is something that every community across the state is struggling with. So there is something that we're going to have to address in one way or the other. And so I think that there is general commitment to, to continue to recognize that all of our communities are truly struggling with this. And that's something that we will continue. The other piece and, and maybe have separate conversations with the congressional delegation, but I think it's incredibly important as well with the federal infrastructure bill that we're also working with you hand in hand where there might be opportunity for larger funding opportunities or, or funding earmarks to be able to work with you to help deliver that to the community as well. I know in, in my past conversations with our congressional delegation that they're, they're eager to help our municipalities in Massachusetts get, get this funding as well. Recognizing that other states are chasing after it and, and that there's always the possibility that other funding decisions could claw back some of the money or, or things like that at the federal level. So certainly have, think, you know, really wanna be able to work with you on that. And, and as we look, as this governor starts her capital budget planning and, and goes down the path of, of doing bond bills, etc. That we have these specific earmarks that the community is looking for so that we can be advocating on your behalf in particular, as, as those types of pieces of legislation move forward.
I apologize for the technical difficulties. I switched over to my iPad while I reboot my computer. I will allow anyone who wants to speak at this point to go forward because I can't see everybody's hands.
If I can ask a follow-up question with regard to the, the Chapter seventy, again, is five hundred and eighty-six million dollars of new Chapter seventy funds going to thirty-two districts. My understanding is, and then two hundred and twelve districts are sharing forty-one million. My understanding is that, that minimum made per student, that's thirty dollars, if that went to a hundred dollars, that the total cost to the state would be south of twenty million dollars. That's my understanding. That seems like a small, a small assistance to two hundred and twelve districts that otherwise would see virtually little to no, you know, increase in state aid like Northborough. I really would like to know your commitment to moving that thirty dollars per student up. Again, the partnership with the legislature last year got it to sixty. We really appreciate that. It did make a difference. So I, I mean, that, that, we're not gonna see any of the money or very little of the money through the Student Opportunity Act and I, and I understand that. And from a policy standpoint, I get why it was done. But all those other districts are getting left and that diminishing amount of money is just getting pushed onto the tax bills. So is there a way? Well, there is a way. Go from that thirty to a hundred. That's how you can help us and the other districts in your, in your area to have a little bit of relief so that we don't, next year, I'm not sitting here saying now state aid is seven percent of our operating budget instead of eight percent.
Yeah, and, and I, and I do wanna make clear, I, I think maybe in my effort to try to manage expectations on, on what funding to expect, perhaps I was a bit too pessimistic. One of the reasons why we are so grateful for the work that you put into preparing that letter and explaining the position of Northborough in context of, of the wider funding mechanisms that we work under is that we can take that and, and use that to show the House Ways and Means Committee leadership and, and leadership in our respective chambers, how some of the budget proposals as written are gonna impact the communities. Like we saw last year, we were able to get that thirty dollars per student raised. I've not heard specifics as to why that won't be the case this year. And we certainly will make sure that the, the, the Pete, the, both the Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee and, and their staff is aware of how the budget proposal that we have before us could negatively impact towns and communities like Northborough. So I hope that makes sense.
I, I appreciate that. I'll just share with you. So I chair the MMA's Fiscal Policy Committee. And as you can imagine, just like the MMA, there's a diverse group. Some people at that meeting are from one of the districts that are benefiting, several are not. It's the first time I've seen in all the years I've served on the committee, people are really starting to argue over haves and have-not type stuff. So, and again, for twenty million dollars, and I know that sounds like a lot of money, but we're talking about almost six hundred million here for twenty million dollars. I think the legislature can just smooth this away and everybody would be happy or happier. Whatever it's worth, I can't just drive that point home. And then the other thing,
Yeah.
The other thing is if I could just come back to the Chapter ninety. Again, we've been having this conversation since twenty twelve. Is there any appetite? Do we all know that every time we delay these investments, they cost four, five, ten times more? Is there gonna be, is there any movement on this at all?
I'll say this. So we had this conversation last year and I know that, I think it was actually Leader Gregoire brought up the fact that there was conversations happening about revamping Chapter ninety completely, because I think all of us know that the formula as written right now is not really serving the, the use that it's being used for at the moment. We, we have most, my municipalities, including many across the Commonwealth, rely on Chapter ninety to, to for their, for to budget the road improvements that we also desperately need. I'll say this, I know that last week there was a Chapter ninety hearing at the State House. I was not in attendance. I was in the, uh, hearing at the same time. But from what I understand that occurred, you know, obviously this was about this issue and about Chapter ninety and nothing else. And that, the, the issue of, of possibly completely revamping it was brought up, I know, by Chair Strauss. Not, we didn't get any definitives. I have not seen any proposals thus far, but I think the fact that it's being brought up in conversation again, it does point to a need that we need to really look hard at that because I know that towns like Northborough and many others can't, can't, can't get the work that they need to get done. Last session, I know that we, the Chapter ninety funds were not raised to the level that the town or others wanted or the MMA wanted. But there was a grant program, program of a hundred and fifty million created to try to provide some mechanism for communities to get money for larger capital projects. So this would be something like, you know, a bridge or something that would require several million dollars that wouldn't be allocated in Chapter ninety to, to go for. So I don't have in terms of the appetite for it. I don't know at this time if there's an appetite to go much higher than what we're seeing in Governor Healy's proposal for four hundred million. I don't know at this time if there's an appetite to go much higher than what we're seeing in Governor Healy's proposal for four hundred million over the course of two years. But what I can say is that there is an appetite to try to really look hard and see what changes have to be made long term to try to give municipalities the assistance that they're looking for. And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't say that it's off the table that we might see some more support in the form of grant transportation infrastructure projects separate of Chapter ninety. So they may be competitive, so they wouldn't be the kind of block of money that you got with that. But something to consider. So and and I'm just trying to be as upfront as I can. I don't want to sit here and tell you that we're gonna give you everything that you want with Chapter ninety when I don't know for sure if that's going to be the case. But I do think that there is some some room for hope as we look towards the next two years of this session.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for for continuing to have a great discussion, which I've been observing and listening to while I've been rebooting my computer. The wonderful things about remote meetings, which I really like, but that's where I do a couple of questions or suggestions, whether it be on earmarks or anything else later on our agenda, and certainly a major issue in the community is how to to retain the White Cliffs Building, which is a very, very important structure and a beautiful piece of art unto itself. And we have a proposal before us tonight, which we'll be talking about later. We may need some help with grants or anything else, whether it be for that proposal or for anything else that that ultimately gets decided to do with that. So I know you're all aware of that, and it's, you know, been in the news and we've talked about it personally. But that's going to be a major, a major issue, funding and otherwise, that that will need some assistance with. You've already talked about extending the remote meeting law, so thank you very much. I know you've all been working on that, and it sounds like that's just about to cross the finish line. We have, as all three of you know, we have an ongoing set of feedback from the community on on an operation on Whitney Street. It's a composting operation that's causing odor issues, to say the least, for neighbors, comes and goes. I've already spoken, I think, with all of you about that, and you're already aware. Representative Killcoin, that's that's your district as far as the state rep avenue goes. So I I don't know what what assistance we will need from that, but we will, we will definitely need some. So we'll be in touch, I'm sure, soon with that. Following up a little bit more on the truck traffic, one interesting avenue, and I don't have a bill to 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 follow on this is following on with what Kristen was talking about. There seems to be a a difference in approach in companies as to whether they employ their own drivers or use contractors. I know in prior legislative sessions, there have been some changes in other industries having to do with contractors versus employees. And I know the Attorney General in years past, that office has has done some good things as far as making sure that companies recognize employees as employees. There's a difference in direction that I think takes place there. If I find a bill that's been filed that might help us in that regard, that would be helpful, because I think if those truck drivers are classified as employees, there might be more responsibility paid on behalf of the company for for where they go and how they they impact the neighbors. And I do want to again emphasize the Chapter ninety funding, which has been talked about several times already. We, as members of the Select Board, hear hear from our constituents on all sorts of issues. Obviously, hot button issues come and go all of the time. It is roads inside.
I think we may have lost.
Can you pick up the narrative there that Mitch was presenting? I don't know what's going on with my computer here. I I apologize. Can you hear me now or not? Okay, good. So roads and sidewalks, roads and sidewalk, roads and sidewalks, yes. Thank you, thank you very, very much. Are there any members of the board or any staff members that have any other questions or comments?
If I could, Mitch, if I could just to your comment about the contract employees for the drivers. I think I am not familiar with the piece of legislation that speaks directly to this for these types of companies. But I do think, as you were mentioning, that it did kind of flag for me the competing legislation that's pending right now around the Uber and Lyft drivers. And whether they ultimately will be required to become employees or whether they'll be able to maintain a car vote as contract employee. So I think it'd be interesting, and I'm I am actually a member of the Transportation Committee. And so as that bill moves forward, I do think rather that probably go through Labor Committee. But either way, I think that's something certainly to track, because I think that there could be further implications for that type of employee status. So I would just just flag that for you as something to to watch, and quite possibly that could be vehicle, no pun intended, but a vehicle for this broader conversation.
Thank you for for that input. If there are no other comments or questions at this time, we do allow public comment during all of our agenda items. I have one hand raised. I am going to request for members of the audience who wish to speak that they speak briefly and address things that are under the board's jurisdiction. If if you have issues or suggestions that are not related to things that the that the board can act within with the legislatures that would ultimately come back to the town, I suggest you contact your legislatures directly. They're all very open to to input and and very accommodating to to hear from folks. I do have one hand up, Joan Frank. I will bring you in. If you could unmute your microphone and identify yourself and say hello.
Good evening, everybody. This is Joan Frank, member of the Northborough KDA School Committee and the Regional School Committee. I like to thank Senator Kennedy, Representative Killcoin, and Representative Kate Donahue for having coming to before our board as you do every year. I like to thank Mitch Cohen for inviting us and the legislators that we have this opportunity. My comments will be very brief, because I think the things that I'm supporting that I would like the legislators is the minimum aid to be to be increased. I thank you for the Student Opportunity Act, which helped to fund some of the things that we one thing that really is is always been on the forefront is the regional transportation, because the commitment was made when by the state when asking districts to go together for regional school systems was to have a hundred percent transportation. Through the years, the legislature has increased it, but we're still not at a hundred percent. And as you know, that it takes the cost of transporting students who reside one and a half miles or more from their schools. Historically, this has been underfunded, and right now we only have eighty five percent of Desi's estimated cost for FY two twenty twenty three. The other thing I want to highlight is the Special Education, Education Circuit Breaker, which has always helped us through this year. But something that has compounded this and why we really need this circuit breaker is that it's an important priority to benefit of all school districts, especially Northborough, is because, as you know, especially in the FY twenty twenty four, the state granted private special education schools a fourteen percent rate increase in November. And that wasn't anything, I think, all board members said, this is something we can, you know, debate with. We can have any input. There was nothing. It was just a flat fourteen percent increase. And also, along with that increase for private special education schools is that we're facing eligible transportation expenses that are clearly rising faster than inflation. So I'd like to thank you if you can, those are the areas that really affect Northborough KDA and also the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. Thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts. And Chairman Mitch Cohen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Uh, can we, are we allowed to comment or?
Absolutely, if you'd like. Not obligated, but you certainly can.
Joan, I just wanted to thank you, if you're still listening, for your service on the school committee. I know you've been a member and involved in that for many years, and just thank you for highlighting those issues, especially the circuit breaker one. We've, I've been hearing it from my schools as well. I know the same is true for my colleagues. And it was brought up at today's hearing. And so we certainly want to make sure that the the concerns are not going unnoticed in terms of the what the what the possible rate raises mean for school districts across the Commonwealth. So just thank you for uplifting those up.
No other hands are raised. I'll close the public comment part of this. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board? Or staff? Or guests?
Please, sorry, just thank you for letting us join you tonight, and I look forward to coming back formally. But also to having multiple conversations in the months and in weeks and days ahead. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, all three of you, for for joining us. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And as I'm looking at my colleagues and thinking about our, the ethnicity of our names, I thought I would wish everybody who's watching a Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I was thinking that too. Yeah, very Irish bunch.
Well, you used to have the classic old male Irish piles. Now you've got the classic women Irish piles.
Well, thank you all so much. And and again, thank you for the information and letter you provided. And we will certainly keep you all posted as we move forward in the budget process. And if we get any updates on things like Chapter seventy or Chapter ninety numbers, we will make sure the town has that ASAP. And John just wanted to wish you the best of luck. I'm sure we'll talk before then, but best of luck in the next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes agenda item. And next up, we have White Cliffs Committee status update. So as we shift gears and say goodbye to our friends. My understanding is we have Chair Todd Helwig to bring in. All right, Todd, I'm going to bring you in here. Turn on your video if you so desire and unmute once you're in here. Todd, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. Are there any other members of of your committee joining us that you'd like me to bring in?
Uh, I honestly don't know whether they're there or not. I suspect they can probably wave in if they wish.
Okay, I see Tom Reardon.
Norm Corbin's on as well as Diana Nicholas.
Okay, yep. Any any of you that would like to be brought in, just raise your hand and I'll bring you in. I see Diane, I'm bringing in Tom. Bringing in, and I see Norm bringing in. Excellent. And of course, Juliana's already here. I'll wait for everybody to come in and turn on your video, video and audio. Hi, Tom. Hi, Diana. Wait another minute and see if Norm wants to join us. And here's Norm. Welcome. I want to thank everyone on the White Cliffs Committee. I know you worked very, very hard for the roughly five to six years that that your committee was in existence and you had a small pandemic interrupting your work in the middle of that. And I I know you worked, I know you worked very, very hard. And this, I think, essentially concludes the work that you've done, which is bringing a and a an option to us for consideration. So I I'd like to to just hear from you as far as your your thoughts on the process, anything you'd like to provide to us. And then we may have some some questions or discussions for you.
Sure. Well, I, first of all, I guess I would like to commend Norm for writing the excellent history of the White Cliffs Commission. I had forgotten many of the roads that we had been down to get here. And I know you got a lot to get to, so I'll be brief and anybody can chime in, you know, when they want to. But I sort of viewed our mission in in three pieces to it, right? The first was to sort of get control of the building shortly after it was acquired and figure out how to keep it from getting worse, right? Fixing this thing and fixing that thing and having meetings on those sorts of topics. And then the second sort of thing that we dealt with was the understanding what the resource was, right? What was the, what were the historic aspects of the building? What needed preserve? What needed to be taken down? And we hired the architectural, the architectural firm from Rhode Island. They did an excellent job preparing the plans to give us, you know, a good idea as to what we actually had over there. And then the third piece, which is mostly what we're here to talk about tonight, was, you know, coming up with advice for the Select Board as to what we thought maybe could be done with this property going forward. You know, and there were two sort of missions with that. One was, you know, preserving the historic resource itself, but then also coming up with a means of utilizing the building that didn't thrust the rather expensive cost of rehabilitating it back onto the taxpayer, taxpayers of Northborough. So, you know, we've looked at over time, we looked at selling the building, we looked at leasing the building, we looked at historic preservation restrictions. We looked at restaurants, we talked about breweries, we talked about event, event, you know, event venues. We talked about office space back when people used office space. We talked about housing, right? The problem with most of the things that we looked at and talked about and talked to consultants about was that they were not going to generate enough money as a business to both pay for the six to ten million dollars of renovation work that would have to happen in the building and support the business itself, which meant if we were to go that route, we would need some contribution, some significant contribution from the taxpayer of Northborough. So following that sort of discussion, we then went into looking into whether we could use the marketplace to propose to come to us with creative solutions to this this sort of problem. As you all know, we submitted an RFP, put an RFP on the street, we got three sort of responses back. One really didn't meet any of the criteria. The second was certainly a creative creative solution, but they really did not have the financial background or technical expertise to be able to, you know, address the problem in a meaningful fashion. And then the third group, which is the one that that's going to be presenting tonight, they had us, you know, they had a team of professionals that had experience in historic preservation and architecture and property management. And they were had a proposal to take a lot of the burden of restoring the building off of the taxpayer, although they will still need some money from us, not in you know, not an insignificant amount, but probably one tenth of what the actual cost is going to be. It would also preserve the historic nature of the building and preserve some form of community access when there really wasn't community access before this whole thing started. So based on that, and coupled with the fact that there is a housing crisis in the Commonwealth and in Northborough, the, you know, the committee voted four to one in favor of recommending, this is our advice to you. We don't actually have the power to decide anything as to the the Metro West proposal was the one to go with.
Thank you very much, Todd. Are any, would any other members of the White Cliffs Committee want to to say anything at this time before we open it up to the board? John?
Just, just because we have a lot of new people that are really interested in this issue for the first time or getting involved for the first time. The question was recently posed or the comment was recently stated to me. I'm surprised that the town of Northborough purchased a White Cliffs building without a plan. And as the person who had to stand up at town meeting and make the pitch, I want to make sure that everybody understands the circumstances under which we acquired this historical asset. The bulldozers were literally in the parking lot. They were ripping things out of the building and it was going to be torn down. So the town had one option, which was to purchase the building to see if we can save it. Now, when we mentioned this, so I went to town to town meeting and we made this pitch and I was very upfront, twenty five years of doing this. I've never, I've never gone to town meeting and asked to acquire an asset without a plan, but given the circumstances, our options were let the place be torn down or purchase it and then try to figure out if we can find some way to save it. So that's what happened. There was no long term plan. There was no, you know, trying to figure out or laying out what we were going to do. We purchased it, as I said at that time, to save, to try to save a very critical piece of the fabric of our community. Once it's gone, it's gone. So that's why we bought it. No, we did not have a plan. Yes, we have been working as Todd just covered for years, running down every option to lead us to where we are in the conversation that we're having this evening. But it wasn't through a lack of planning or poor decision making. It was, it was a decision to try to save the asset and figure out if we can make it work long term or not. Once it's torn down, you don't have that chance to have that discussion anymore. So that's sort of the context in which White Cliffs came to 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 be here in the town. And then we were going through the process, as Todd said, to try to figure out the various options. And it didn't help that the top, one of the top priority reuses would be as an event space during a pandemic. So things sort of bogged down for us a little bit. But again, it wasn't for lack of effort. It wasn't for a lack of planning. That's just a situation that we have. So we still have the asset, we're still trying to find a viable option for it and economically viable viable option for it. And that's what the point of the presentation is this evening. So just that little bit of history, because some people keep asking, well, why did we ever buy it if we didn't know what we're going to do with it? Because if we didn't, it wouldn't be here right now, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Members of the board. Questions, comments? And again, we're talking here about the work done to date. We're not talking about the the project, which will be our next agenda item. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to in a manner echo and support John's explanation of the background context for this, having sat through that town meeting and and witnessed, you know, the discussion that went on at that time. It was clearly, we certainly weren't presenting it as a business proposition. It was presented as a value proposition where the value was the preservation of the aesthetics and the historic structure. We did not have a plan for how we could dispose of it. There was no certainty about what the cost would be or what the different options might be to redeploy it. But the question was whether or not to save it or not. And that is what the decision of town meeting was by their vote that evening. And it was, you know, for the people assembled, two hundred and eighty three people, five people, something like that. It was easily a three to one margin, seventy five, seventy six percent of the vote that wanted to preserve White Cliffs. So just want to echo that background for where we are today. And I do want to thank the members of the White Cliffs Committee for the time and effort they've put into into this over the last several years to evaluate different options, to pursue different, you know, opportunities there might be to try to solicit interest from parties who might be interested in participating in this. It hasn't been an easy task. And I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it to bring us to this point where seemingly we do have a viable option to consider, which it isn't necessarily a town owned resource. And it's not gone. But there probably is a compromise being struck in in what what's being considered. So it took a lot of work to get to this point and I appreciate the work of the committee to get us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Scott?
Yes, thank you. And Jason, you stole my thunder a bit. I was also going to thank the committee members. I mean, I followed along both in person and and definitely through through the video and all the reports. You know, the thinking back of all the work you did to evaluate, you know, different reuse options and get it narrowed down to the the few that had some sort of business model that you could put to it. And as Todd mentioned, you know, all those business models, you know, reflected a a very significant investment that would be needed. So, you know, thank you for all that work and evaluation. And then this most recent phase to solicit and 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 work with the consultant to get the word out. It is broad a possible way to get any sort of creative ideas on how that be reused. And I'm glad we got glad we saw three. You know, I was worried through all this, we wouldn't see, you know, any proposals and to see some come in, some meet the criteria and at least one advanced to this stage was a credit to the work that you all did. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Scott. Any other members wish to, Julian?
Yeah, so I was the select board person on the committee for most of the time. And you know, I think many times we we move along thinking we're doing the best thing. And I would just like to say tonight that in hindsight, the sequence of work maybe could have been a little bit different so that we we aren't having the community conversation that we're having right now in the papers and on Facebook and at various committees. And that would have been to bring in the public much earlier on. It seems to me that that what people, when they voted to preserve the building and the property, many of them had a different vision of what what the committee finally voted on. And so I think it's great that tonight we're gonna hopefully hear from a lot of people and kind of reset this this sequence of events. So thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Anybody else? Couple of things. First, I want to echo what I think Todd said about Norm's history about White Cliffs there. That was thorough and impressive. And I've read some of that before Norm and each time I read a little bit more, I learn, I learn a little bit more. That's that's really good work. And no matter what happens, the the future town of Northborough will will have a lot to thank for you for for the history of the building as well as the work you did along the way.
If I may, Mitch. There's a misconception that this was done pretty quick. I've been working on this for over nine years when the building went up, went on the market in January two thousand fourteen. This has been a long struggle. This has not been pretty quick. And I just want people to appreciate the challenges of this and what we ended up with.
Thank you, Norm. That's that's very clear. I agree. I'm curious if the committee with within one of the documents, there was a an option called preservation light, I think was the name. I'm curious whether the White Cliffs Committee gave much consideration to going down that road or seeking grants or anything else to try to get the building into usable shape even without a use. And it's okay if you didn't. I'm just curious whether you did and and what your thoughts are on that.
So I think the preservation light option was something that John was pushing us to consider. Once we've, once we saw the first really big numbers as to how much this was going to cost. And then the preservation light model was sort of what we thought about in connection with going forward. Anybody was probably going to do that. Right? So that was, you were going to probably have to spend the light amount in order to get the building to a place where you could use it for one of these other uses. So it was, it was definitely how we arrived at sort of the lower number that you needed. I think some of the other numbers were a lot higher than that.
Can I add to that?
Of course.
So as I understood the preservation light option, it was it was one step that assumed a series of steps that would follow. You know, a lot of people in the town have have mentioned to members of the committee, oh, are you going to make this an accessible building? Things like preservation light would not include full accessibility. So I think the town would not have really gotten much value out of preservation light. I think the best case scenario for that was that it would protect the building until a full preservation could occur.
And that that's correct, Diana. Preservation light was not going to end up with any use of the building. Was to get it ready for someone else to see it was gonna bundle up the building more. It was going to take down some of the old additions. But at the end of preservation light, the building would still be locked. That's need to recognize that. That's what that was, was to get it ready for another partner or buyer.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't go down the road of of thinking seriously about it. It was really a placeholder budget item for any future use. That's what I'm understanding. Thank you. Only other question I have is rather boring in comparison is I was looking up some of the the former meetings that you held and I couldn't find any recent meeting minutes. So I would suggest your board to to get those posted in the near future, just for history's sake, if you will. I didn't have any further questions. Again, members of the board or staff, anything to add? Members of the committee? Anything?
Just if I may, just one more thing briefly, in terms of the process, the first thing we did was assess the building so that we could try to immediately take steps to preserve and protect what we could to button up the building envelope. That was done, that was done, the bulk of the work that was done early. Then we looked at possible reuses. Those numbers were very, very, very high. And that's when we were basically told there's a huge gap here. That it's afterwards that we went out and we held public meetings and everybody had a chance to provide input about what we'd like to see in that RFP. We hired a consultant to do the broadest possible marketing campaign that we could. We saw all kinds of input from the community, from the board members. And then ultimately comes down to what's viable, what's economically viable for us to potentially consider. That's the process that was was followed. I don't know that there's another process we could have followed. So I think the committee did the right things in the right order. And, you know, it's a tough building. And there's very few uses that would allow the type of grant access to grant funding that would close that that gap analysis that was done by the consultant showing, you know, what would be needed to get this building back into a useful shape. The the numbers are just, they're just high. So thank you.
Thanks, John. Members of the White Cliffs Committee, I want to thank you again for your hard work in in preserving the building, at least for the last last few years. And hopefully we will find a way to to keep it going for many more. That concludes this agenda item. Send all of you back to attendee land. And next up, we have Metro West Collaborative Development Presentation and Discussion on Reuse Proposal for White Cliffs. Chief Parenti, I think you have the names of the who are going to be brought in. I will preface this discussion by making clear to 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 all involved that this is a discussion. This is the board's first time hearing about this proposal in a formal fashion. The agenda item for this was written specifically to say discussion. There will be no votes on the project tonight. And so there will not be any approval or refusal or anything else other than this is the board's opportunity to hear from the developer and ask some questions. I imagine that some of the questions will take a little bit of time to answer and and then we'll schedule subsequent meetings accordingly. This is an important, important thing to the community. So we're going to take our time and make sure we we do it right as we make decisions going down this road. Hope that that helps. We have Caitlin Madden, who Caitlin, you and I exchanged a couple of emails. Actually, why don't the the three of you who are in identify yourself if you could?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Madden and I'm the Executive Director of Metro West Collaborative Development.
Hi, I'm Derek Hanson. I am the Senior Real Estate Manager at Metro West Collaborative Development.
And Marshall Gould, I'm an attorney in Worcester and Northborough, and I'm assisting Metro West in this project.
Thank you very much. Welcome to all three of you. I don't know if you have a presentation you would like to give or or simply some statements. It's your show.
All right, I'm going to try and share my screen here and bring up the presentation.
Great.
Can you see that?
We do.
Excellent.
Okay, um, so I will go ahead and jump in. Again, my name is Caitlin Madden and I am the Executive Director of Metro West Collaborative Development. And we are here today to share with you the details of our proposal for the White Cliffs Mansion. I know that it has been a long and difficult road to get to this point. But we appreciate the effort of the town staff, the members of the community and the evaluation committee to get to this point. We believe that our proposal is responsive to the priorities identified in the request for proposals. And we saw an opportunity to bring our expertise in using affordable housing as a tool to leverage public and private resources to help the town achieve its goals in terms of preservation of the mansion and a chance to also meet a number of the goals that were identified in the two thousand and twenty master plan. We see our RFP submission as the beginning of a process. If the select board votes to accept the evaluation committee's recommendation, we would move into a community engagement process leading to a future town meeting after we've had the chance to engage with the town. We know that there are questions about our proposals and a lot of conflicting information out there. So we are grateful to have the opportunity to share the details with you. And we hope that by hearing from us, you're able better able to understand who we are, what we are proposing and how a housing proposal brings many benefits to the town of Northborough. So a little bit more background on who we are and the experience that we bring. We are a thirty year old regional nonprofit, five oh one C three organization. We are also a certified community development corporation and a certified community housing development organization. So the CHODO certification is a certification given by HUD to organizations that have a proven track record for planning, financing, developing and owning affordable housing. We have a twenty five town target area in the West Metro region, which includes Northborough. And our efforts to promote affordable housing fall into three main categories. So we connect people to affordable housing. We work with individuals and families in their search for affordable housing and their efforts to keep the affordable housing they have, including administering financial and emergency rental assistance. We also advocate for affordable housing and we work with community leaders to create and implement programs and policies that support the construction and preservation of affordable housing. We also build it. So we leverage public and private resources to create permanently affordable housing in our region. Just to give you a sense of our experience in housing production, we currently have a portfolio of one hundred and ten units located in Watertown, Medway and Norwell. On the right hand side in the image, on the right, you'll see our Glenbrook Way project, which was forty eight units of family rental housing in Medway, Massachusetts. And in terms of our portfolio, we also have on the image on the left here. And sorry, I don't have my pointer. You see, we'll see phase two of our Medway project, which is forty four units of one hundred percent affordable senior housing that is in construction. That is in construction right now and will be completed towards the end of this year. So when phase two is complete, we'll have a ninety two unit intergenerational campus in Medway. We have also been selected as the developer for a former police station site in Hudson, Massachusetts. Where we were selected through a competitive application process to develop forty units of one hundred percent affordable family rental housing. I will highlight that the town of Hudson is another example of a town that has met their ten percent requirement under chapter forty B. But chose to move forward and with an affordable housing proposal because they understood the economic benefits of providing housing in their community to serve the people in their town. And last but not least, we are also working on the historic adaptive reuse of the West Newton Armory. So similar to Northborough, it is a complex historic adaptive reuse. It was also town owned property and we were selected as the developer through a competitive RFP process from a pool of seven other applicants. We have received our comprehensive permit approval under chapter forty B and we are currently being some considered for funding by the state. I also want to highlight that on all of our pipeline projects. We are pursuing passive house certification. So passive house is currently the gold standard in terms of sustainability, building, sustainable building practices. And we are pursuing certification and electrification at all of the projects that you see on the screen here. So we have a depth of expertise in developing affordable housing. We also work closely with some of the most well respected consultants and experts in our field of work. At the White Cliffs, we are proposing to work with Davis Square Architects. A very well respected architecture firm that is very active in historic preservation in the region. And we also have Maureen Kavanaugh from Public Archaeology Laboratories. Who would serve as our historic preservation consultant to help us navigate the very complex historic renovation work and approval process related to the preservation of the mansion. We also work with attorneys, you heard from Marshall Gould, who is here with us tonight, serving as our permitting attorney. We also work with very respected development consultants and we have a third party professional property manager, Maloney Properties. Who again is one of the most respected teams in this work and is manages a portfolio across the region. So before I pass it off to Derek to talk more specifically about the details of our proposal for the White Cliffs. I wanted to take an opportunity to just talk more generally about what is affordable housing. Because I know that there are sometimes questions about how it's owned and managed and we want to just put some information out there that might be helpful. So we developed deed restricted affordable housing for a set period of time. All of our projects to date have been restricted in affordability and perpetuity. So unlike private developers, it is a requirement and recorded with our deed that we will maintain rents at a level that is affordable for the people we serve. The affordable housing that we build is also privately owned, so Metro West Collaborative Development would continue to be the owner of the property. And it is professionally managed and maintained by our third party professional management team. All of the maintenance costs associated with the property and the site are paid for by the property. By the income that's generated from the rents that we collect. And our buildings are also beautifully designed to fit within the neighborhood context. We work with great teams of architects to survey the surrounding neighborhood, to work with members of the community, to think about the look and feel and make sure that we're fitting in the fabric of the existing neighborhood in terms of style. Materials and the look and feel of our communities. We also build to the highest quality of construction standards. As I mentioned before, our port pipeline projects are all being designed to pass a house standards. The level of review in a passive house certified building is very intense. We have lots of experts reviewing our drawings, providing third party input to make sure that we're providing high quality construction so that the buildings last for the long term and perform to the highest level. I also want to point out some of the other benefits to the town of an affordable housing proposal. So the property, affordable housing projects do pay property taxes as we would expect to be the case here in Northborough. The property would also pay for the water and sewer usage, as would any other private owner. We also see affordable housing as a driver for other local revenue in terms of meals tax, sales tax, vehicle registrations. And other, you know, small impacts on revenue for the town. We also see affordable housing as a driver for economic development. So both in terms of creating more people who are near the center of town to really drive businesses that are existing in the area. But also to offer opportunities for folks who work in those businesses to live in town. So that they don't have a long commute and hopefully they choose to stay employed. Because they can live in town and work in town and stay for the long term. We also see affordable housing as a way to attract additional state and federal resources to town. So in addition to the many resources that we would leverage to build the White Cliff Mansions, there are also often ripple ripple effects. In terms of other investments that might be available. I'll give an example from our project in Medway. The town was able to apply for and receive a three hundred thousand dollar grant through Mass Works to create a sidewalk connection from the property where we built affordable housing down into the town center so that there was a pleasant experience walking to town, again, driving business. Okay. I'm gonna try and pick up my pace here. I know it's getting late. So I want to speak a little bit to the need for affordable housing in Northborough. So I'm sure that this is not news to anyone who lives in town, but the median home value in Northborough is rising. It is currently five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. I know that many folks who currently have been living town, if they were to try and purchase a home now, could likely not afford to do so. The master plan also noted that from two thousand to two thousand sixteen, the median monthly rent increased seventy percent. While median household income increased thirty eight percent. So that just shows an increased rent burden among renter households in Northborough as well. A couple of other highlights in terms of need in Northborough, the master plan completed in twenty twenty indicates that ended sufficient housing choice exists in town. And also only two out of the one hundred and four subsidized apartments for seniors and people with disabilities are accessible. This is a major need and a major gap in the housing choices available to folks in Northborough to serve their needs. And the need is especially true for affordable housing to grow, to growing the se- excuse me, the growing senior population burden by high housing costs, who maybe want to downsize and remain in town, but don't have that option. And for young people who grew up in town but struggled to afford housing that would allow them to stay in town and move back to be close to their parents who might help with childcare. I also want to point out a note on the subsidized housing inventory. So often people hear that Northborough has met its ten percent requirement under chapter forty B. But something that I think people don't often understand is that the way that the subsidized housing inventory counts affordable housing is that any development that includes any affordable housing. All of those units are able to be included on the S H I. So for example, the three hundred and all three hundred and eighty two units of Avalon are included on this S H I, but only ninety six are actually restricted as affordable. So if you only the affordable units at the Avalon were included in the S H I calculation. Then the percentage of truly affordable units in Northborough is actually only six percent. I think that's just something that people don't often realize about how that calculation works. Okay, all right. Well, that was enough for me, just background on Metro West CD and the need for affordable housing. And now I'm going to pass it to Derek to walk you through the specifics of our proposals for the White Cliffs.
Thanks, Caitlin. All right. So getting into some of the details of the proposal itself, I wanted to start with the four criteria that the RFP laid out for determining whether or not the proposal met the goals of the town. And how we responded to them. The first of those was obviously the restoration and preservation of the mansion itself. Because we're proposing to use historic tax credits, our work on the property will be held to a very high standard. To ensure that we are saving any of the character defining features of the historic property. We would also plan to add new building systems that were more efficient and upgrade the envelopes to increase like the insulation of the property. We would also strive to improve the accessibility into the mansion itself. The second goal was to reduce the burden on White Cliffs of White Cliffs on the town. So as Caitlin mentioned, because we're a private owner and because we use government funds. Our underwriting of the property is rigorously examined by many agencies and they will basically make sure that we are able to finance the upkeep of the property with our affordable rents for the long term and they will force us to keep that promise. We will also, as a private owner, pay property taxes, as Caitlin mentioned. And we will pay for utilities, water and sewer, as any other would. And we will have onsite property management at the property as well. The third criteria was improvements to the landscaping. We'll have a professional landscape architect. Who will survey the existing plantings and would plan to augment any of the existing screening along the property line that is not sufficient. We will also replant the large paved area behind the existing structure. And will enhance the site with many other non invasive species and selectively added hardscape. The fourth criteria was condition consideration of public access or an enhanced relationship to the community. So what we have proposed is that the community have access to the first floor of the mansion for small events, something that might be similar to a baby shower or a film screening. And that would be at no cost to the residents and organizations of Northborough. Digging into what affordability means at White Cliffs, you can see that we have proposed a section of units to be held aside for thirty percent AMI households and a section to be held for sixty percent AMI households. That is what that means exactly is on the right side of the slide. So for a household of two that was qualified for a sixty percent AMI unit, they could earn up to fifty three thousand dollars. Whereas a household of two qualifying for a thirty percent AMI unit could earn up to twenty six thousand five hundred dollars. To put that in context of what someone who's working in Northborough, who could also qualify to live in one of these units. It could very commonly be, for example, a senior couple living on a fixed income, who is looking to stay in town. But reduce their living expenses. It could also be someone who works for the town. If they were in a grade one or grade two position. As a town employee, they might qualify to live here, even potentially a grade three employee could qualify if they were living in a situation where they were a single income household. Another example taken from indeed an actual job description was a full time pharmacy tech at the CVS on West Main Street that would earn twenty four dollars an hour, they could live here. Or for example, an oral surgery assistant, also working at a dentist office in Northborough. There was a job posting where they could earn fifty five thousand dollars a year. If they were living with their spouse who was full time caregiver to their child, they would also qualify at this property. Looking at the physical proposal, the actual buildings and what we would do with them. So the genesis of the RFP was the historic structure and that's where we started with laying out the site. One of the big things we wanted to do was maintain the historic sightline up this up the hill. So that you could see the property as you always had from the street and that will be maintained. Because we're using historic tax credits, as I said, we're also going to have to comply with the Secretary of Interior's standards for the rehabilitation of historic properties. That will be a requirement of the funding. It's very rigorous. And what we'll have to adhere to and we'll also plan to improve insulation, insulation, weatherization. As well as add some more efficient mechanical systems. Our proposal would demolish the nineteen fifties additions and return the footprint of the house to its original size. We would also, as I said, have the community access to the the most impressive first floor space. And then we would also have the onsite management office likely in that building as well. Oh, sorry. So this is just an example of some of the other state and historic tax credit projects that DSA has done, the architect on the project. It ranges from a row of very high end apartments in the south end. To, for example, the larger Carter School Apartments building they did in Lemonster. And then moving behind the building, so up the hill and around to the back of the site is where we would propose to build a new construction apartment building. This would be a three story building. As you can see on the site plan, we are proposing about a fifteen thousand square foot floor plate. The fifty two units would be broken down seventeen units, one bed, twenty units of two bed and fifteen units of three bed. And as far as the design, in order to fix, fit it into the neighborhood context, we would plan to use a sloped shingle roof with dormers to reduce the feel of the massing of the building. We would also propose that this building would be all electric. So we would have basically the ability to take full advantage of any improvements to the renewable electricity that is added to the infrastructure in town. We would also make the new construction component universally accessible, which basically means that you would have an elevator to every floor. You would have powered door operators to every common space. Every unit would be visitable by someone with limited mobility. And we would also have a significant number of the units that were fully accessible on day one. So someone with limited mobility could move in and be able to live there. From the beginning of the property. We're also planning to maintain significant open space. As you can see, we've left a lot of green on the site. This is a pulled out view of this overall site plan as we've proposed it. One of the, I think, key elements of the site is because we do have the size. We have been able to achieve a very high parking ratio. So we have a hundred and one spaces right now on the site plan, which is a one point nine parking ratio. We had conceived of the twenty two spaces in the lower lot as being primarily what we're calling overflow parking. So that may be for if there was a community event at the mansion. So that those people didn't weren't the residents of the community walking up to the apartment building behind it. Even when we take out the overflow parking, there's still one point five parking ratio, which we think is more than enough for this type of property. The schedule is one thing that has changed since we originally submitted our proposal. And that's primarily driven because we had originally intended to be a part of the April town meeting. And so we assumed that we would then be able to start the comprehensive permit process over the summer. And be in the January twenty twenty four D H C D funding round. With our new target of being in the possible September town meeting. That would then mean that we would start our comprehensive permit process after that sometime in December. And then we would be able to work on design development through the year of twenty twenty four and apply in the January twenty twenty five D H C D funding rounds. The important thing and the reason there's an asterisk. The important thing and the reason there's an asterisk on that is because the January one-stop funding round for new projects is the way it has been in the previous administration, administration under Baker administration. We do not know, in fact, if that's going to be the timeline for the new administration. It's possible they will have a slightly different timeline. They may, in fact, invite projects in the middle of the year, which was not done before, in which case this could change to the better. But based on our experience, January twenty twenty-five is likely when we would be in the funding round. A key advantage of the project for the town of Northborough is that we would be able to take a relatively small local contribution and leverage that into many magnitudes larger of state and federal funding for the project. Overall, our total development cost will be around twenty-four million dollars. We would be asking the local CPA to contribute eight hundred thousand dollars of that. So for about three percent of local money, we can bring in ninety-seven percent of the project cost from the state and regional, state and federal funding agencies. Also, because community preservation funding is allocated to certain buckets and cannot be used for anything else, we think this project is a very good opportunity to check all three of those boxes. Certainly, the historic preservation bucket of community preservation and the affordable housing would be checked here. We think because it is a seven-acre site, you could potentially also advocate this is a use for open space as well. Finally, I want to leave us on the fifth element of the White Cliffs RFP evaluation criteria, which is the consideration of the elements of the twenty-twenty master plan and how this project can fit into that. There are several goals, which I believe this proposal would help Northborough achieve. It would, of course, expand protection of historic resources. It would encourage diversity of housing options to increase affordability. Very significantly, I think that H two dash four goal, it would add housing immediately to the downtown area, which would attract residents and absolutely support the area's economic viability and vitality. And I'll just end by reading the vision statement here that Northborough envisions a future where historic sites are preserved and integrated into the community to welcome, educate and inspire, where well-balanced housing stocks supports longstanding residents and newer arrivals alike, and where future environmental and fiscal changes are given consideration, be planning for a more sustainable and resilient community. We think that this proposal proposal would do a lot of that for the town, and we look forward to the opportunity to work with you and making this a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does. Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. If you can do me a favor and stop the sharing of the screen so that we can all join each other, see each other's faces.
There we are.
Great. Thank you. Before we begin with questions from the board, John, I didn't know if you or Lori or any staff wanted want to say anything at this time?
I know Lori is on the call on the on the meeting. I hope she has anything to add.
Good. We'll certainly have some some questions for her, I imagine. Hi, Lori.
A meeting would be helpful. So so I have certainly been working with the White Cliffs committee over the last year, and I've been very impressed with the work that has been done before I joined the party and also the work that they've conducted over the last year. Certainly, I I know that the people who are on the committee are very dedicated to saving this building and finding a use that the community would be happy with, that would benefit certainly the community's efforts thus far. As far as downtown revitalization is concerned, I will say that I do think that the number of long-term commercial vacancies downtown point to the fact that there is possibly a lack of demand for additional business enterprises downtown, unless we can also add some housing downtown. So usually, the most successful downtown revitalization initiatives balance the two together. So it's about bringing more housing downtown, and that creates the marketplace for additional business development downtown. So mixed use is really kind of the key to most successful campaigns. So the great thing about this proposal is it would be within walking distance of our focus area for downtown. So the folks who would live in this development would certainly spend their money on those downtown businesses. So I I just wanted to really make that clear that I think that more housing downtown is key to a successful revitalization campaign.
Thanks, Lori. Members of the board, questions or comments? Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And a question then for the Metro West team. Some of the public comments and input we've gotten might deal with traffic or impact to schools. Do you have models that you use that anticipate the traffic that might be generated or the students in schools that might be generated?
Yes, so that is certainly part of our standard procedure is looking carefully at traffic impacts. You know, if we are selected as the developer, that is certainly a part of the work that we would do during the comprehensive process, and it would be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. I do understand that there are some concerns around a particular intersection at about twenty, where there's some existing issues. So that's where I kind of come back to the idea that if there is a housing proposal in town that is likely to attract attention from state folks and potentially some funding to support some improvements in the public way, similar to what we experienced in in Medway. But those are certainly topics that we would plan to review during the comprehensive permit process.
Great, thank you. So really, the point is, is there are established models to determine what the impacts would be, and part of the process would take us through that. And I thank you, Caitlin, for bringing up the point about that with development along Route twenty, it might then get the interest from state agencies, especially D O T, to help us with some of the the issues there. So thank you for that answer.
And then one other thing I would add on that topic is just around the traffic impacts that we've seen at our projects that we've created in other towns. You know, unlike an event space where everyone's coming all at one time for a wedding or an event, where there's sort of a big flood of of traffic and cars all at once, a residential use is really more varied. People have different schedules, people work from home, people work the night shift, people go to school. So it's it's a it's a different, and in my opinion, more manageable traffic pattern as opposed to some potential other uses.
Caitlin, since we're, Kristin, I'll get to you in just a second, since we're talking about traffic. So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, which is that you want to be awarded the contract and then do the traffic planning. Traffic is clearly one of the main concerns that residents have expressed to us. I would I would just encourage your firm to to think about that a little bit in advance. Totally appreciate you would be able to do thorough traffic planning, you know, intersection design, lighting design, things like that until you're a little further down the road. But it would be helpful to us to to think about that a little bit more before we make a decision. And I I will just add, I should have started at the beginning. We're going to be asking questions that I know your firm and staff will not be able to answer or respond to at this meeting. That's totally fine. That's why we're going to continue this to a later date to give everyone the opportunity to to think about an update and 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 gather their answers for for our future meeting. So for any anything that you're asked or or anything else, feel free to just not respond now, and you'll have a chance later. Thank you. Kristen, you you had your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. So thanks for that presentation. The there was one picture, a sort of an overview of like a like a bird's eye view of your your plan. And there were a lot of trees around the property. And I wasn't sure if that, if those trees are all really there or whether you added them in. And that might sound like a silly question, but if if the residents who live in the neighborhoods around there are used to all those trees, if they are really there, and you're it looked like your roads and your parking lots were going to be cutting down a lot of the trees. That's just something I I would like a little clarification on as I'm processing all these all these points and all this information. It's it's a lot to take in, and that was just one thing that kind of jumped out at me at your presentation.
Caitlin, do you mind if I take this one? So the the site plan, which I can bring back up if that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, thanks.
So the this site plan is based on a Google satellite image. So those trees are actually there. And then I can annotate a little bit. So this this roadway here obviously exists already, and then this parking lot, and this is here. And then this paved area that goes back like this is also here. What we currently have on the site is basically, if you think of like, this is kind of the extent of where the current building is with its additions. There's like a big paved area back here. Like, it's it's very large, just like flat paved area. I think it was probably parking. So that's where we've tried to locate the new development in order to avoid removing any of the good screening. Because there is actually quite good screening on the site already. There's a good separation with the tree line. And then also, like, along this area and this area here, as well as here, but it's less important because this is a commercial building. But along the back and the west side, there's also a steep grade change, which helps us out because it's quite a bit of separation between, like, visual separation between the uses. There is less of a grade change on this side, which is why we've called out putting the fencing here. Because we do think that these areas, in particular with the parking lot and less of a slope, would need particular protection. So that's why we want to put like a privacy fence there.
Okay, yeah, that helps me. And I think I have been looking at that red dotted line. That's just whatever the, is that the property line?
Exactly, that's the property line.
But you're, so you'll leave all those trees there if you end up developing this, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, we want to leave as many trees as possible.
Okay, all right, good. Thanks.
So those trees just to the north, you can either bring it back or not bring it back if you want to. Those the trees just on the north of of that property line, those are, that's the backyard of Stratton Way, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yes, so those are the trees owned by the homeowners, and that's their their screening on their side. And it looks like you're getting pretty close to that line, but preserving a few trees between the parking lot.
Yeah, and the the paved area does already get pretty close to there, but that is definitely the main area of concern for us, which is why we want to do the like six-foot-high board fence there.
Okay. Thanks. Julianne?
Yeah, hi, nice to see you all again. I had a little visit with in Medway with you. So one of the points that Caitlin you brought up was the percent of affordable housing that we currently have in Northborough and the the difference between what mass.gov says that we have over eleven percent. And you point out that of of our affordable housing, only six percent is deed restricted. So what my question is this, that number is very important to the state because they look at that to say whether or not we have met our quota. And it it seems to me that the state is okay with how we have met that quota. Oh, and and I wonder if you agree or disagree with that. But also, my other question is, if you looked at another town that has over eleven percent affordable housing, would would they also have a little difference in that number and deed restricted affordable housing?
Sure, so that is certainly the way that the S H I numbers calculated in in every town in the Commonwealth. So I'm sure that every town would have that that difference if you really look at the the numbers. And I think that you know, in the technical sense, the town has met the ten percent requirement. But I think that, you know, we're learning more about the housing crisis. We're learning more about how the cost of housing is completely out of touch with incomes. And I think we're really starting to understand that there is a a genuine need for increased housing affordability. So I think that if the town in my view, that thinking about it through the lens of removing the market rate housing that is included in that calculation, that gives you a true sense of what the true affordability is here. And I think it's up to the town to decide whether that's acceptable or not. But I think that the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan have pointed out that the existing housing in town is is not sufficient.
I'll let Jason go.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of points, just to follow up on that one. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the state's criteria and threshold is something to be achieved, and if you achieve it, then you have avoided the threat or the consequence of hostile forty B developments being foisted about upon the town and bypassing local zoning regulation. Is that correct? So it was to our advantage in Northborough with the Avalon Bay complex, even though only twenty-five percent of the units are deed restricted for affordability. We got to count all of the units and thereby, you know, relieved ourselves from subsequent forty B hostile, what I would term hostile forty B possibilities. But you don't want to confuse that circumstance and that number with the actual state of affordability within the town for housing. And as you correctly point out, with only ninety-six of those units at Avalon Bay actually being deed restricted, our actual affordability threshold is on the order of six percent. So that becomes kind of a a policy issue or a value issue for the town about whether it wants to further increase its affordable housing stock, even though we've met the, you know, nominally, we've met the state requirement, but in in real terms, have we met, you know, the goal of affordable housing within the town? The other question I had, I'm not sure who would speak to this, maybe, maybe Derek. In terms, can you can you comment on the the operational cost and the the sustainability, I guess, to to operate and maintain the properties at these rent thresholds once it's kind of put into operation. Obviously, at completion of construction, everything looks new and pristine, and everyone's very pleased, you know, with the aesthetics and everything. But over time, say, ten years, twenty years, you know, what's what's been your experience with operating and maintaining the properties in that condition?
Yeah, and that's a that's a key part of why the under- Yeah, and that's a um, that's a key part of why the underwriting for these properties is so rigorous at the outset. Because we have multi-decade deed restrictions and we we cannot basically refinance. Um, for an extremely long period of time. So the government agencies that are providing the money basically want us to be able to confirm. Uh, to a very rigorous standard upfront that even with these low rents, we're going to be able to. Pay a reasonable amount into our operating budget every year. And we hold reserves, uh, replacement reserves, operating reserves, um, that are mandated to us. Um, so. I can say that like on a a per unit basis. What we're underrating for operating is quite a bit higher than what a market rate operator would underwrite. Um, and you were asking two things, you're also asking about sustainability, um, so to connect that to the operating. One of the great advantages of the passive house is that it does seriously reduce our uh, utilities expenses. Which is, you know, doubly so on the properties where we can find uh, sources of funding for solar. Um, as we've done in our Medway property, um, with the increase that we saw in the past year in um. Utility prices in Massachusetts, having that solar array in Medway. Um, just gave us a a great level of comfort that we wouldn't have had otherwise, otherwise that we were going to be able to continue. To operate the property as we want to.
Great, thank you very much.
Jason. Members of the board, any any other questions on? Uh, Julianne?
Does does that mean you intend to put a solar ray on the property?
We have not included that in the proposal at the moment because the uh, ability to finance solar depends a lot on what kind of subsidies exist at any. Particular moment and that's changing. Um, but we would explore putting a uh, solar array on this. We think it's a benefit, um, if the town also felt that way, it is something that um, can be very helpful.
Okay, and and can I ask a question about property tax? So. Um, how how is affordable housing assessed for property value?
So we um, affordable housing is supposed to be assessed based on an income approach evaluation. Uh, so they would, the assessor would basically take the NOI, the net operating income for the property. Uh, and they would apply a capitalization rate to it. Uh, that's typically how it works, it's like a percentage, uh, that basically you take. The net operating income and you divide it by, let's say, seven percent, um, and that gives you the value of the property. Um, and then that value would basically be taxed like any other residential property in Northborough. So whatever the normal tax rate is.
I'll have to think about that for a minute. Okay, and and just one more question, I promise. Okay, so the twenty four million dollar projection for the total cost of the. Project. Um, what what amount did you figure would you would have to spend to restore the mansion?
That is a of a difficult question at this point. Um, I would say that we've been highly conservative. Um, and basically, we've broken it down into two buckets. One is. Uh, the the demolition and the um, exterior work. Um, to improve like, you know, the roof and the chimney and the uh, insulation and all that. Um, so that kind of like um, work to the bones of the property. Um, we have in right now like. Three million, just under three million dollars. And then the new construction piece, which would basically be, it would include the apartment and then the new apartments that we would be putting into. The interior of the uh, White Cliffs Mansion would be about fourteen million dollars. So hard costs for the entire project is like seventeen million. But it's it's like blended.
So fourteen million to build the apartments in the mansion?
Fourteen million to build the apartment building and to. Create the apartments in the bill, in the building itself.
Okay, and three million to get the building. Into into usable condition. Okay, alright, um, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I've got a few questions that I'll ask and we'll do another round before we open up to questions from the audience. I I I want to say I I appreciate your examples from the master plan, um, that is uh. Shows that you've read our master plan, that's important. Um, first question, could any of this project be allocated? Explicitly for seniors. Um, the town last year did try to put together a senior affordable housing project. Um, for for reasons having nothing to do with you, just a cost escalation and um, and inability to to get some state help. Given that, um, we had to withdraw that project unfortunately, so that the the town is is certainly interested in some senior affordable housing.
Or so I can speak to that and Derek, if you have anything to add, please jump in. Um, so we are. Um, our proposal is conceived of as being an intergenerational proposal, so appropriate for seniors. Um, in terms of accessibility and adaptability and also having the um, appropriate unit sizes to accommodate. Um. Seniors who are couples or maybe um, a senior who has a live-in aide, so who would, someone who would need a two-bedroom. Um, but we have found um, a lot of success with the intergenerational concept. Um, because if you're thinking about this proposal in terms of, um, you know, a workforce housing of, you know, housing for people who can. Work at the businesses in town, um. We find that having a a multi-generational um, approach to communities, um, brings a number of benefits. Um, so while we would not restrict it to only seniors, um, we would make sure that it was um, appropriate for seniors.
Leads into a another question I had is how are, I mean, certainly there is. Based on what I understand, more of a demand for affordable housing than there is stock. And how are residents, how would residents be be selected for this?
Sure, um, so we um. Would um, create what is called an affirmative fair housing marketing plan. Um, that would outline the process by which we market our units, um, advertise, um, lease up and ultimately build. Um, and those are um, really driven by um, a lot of fair housing requirements, um, from the the state. Um, there is an um, a possibility of including a local preference in that marketing plan. Um, and D H C D currently allows a local preference of up to seventy percent. Um, so that would allow um. Um, households who either live or work in Northborough to get a preference in the lottery based on that. Um, living or working in town. So we, I will say that um, a lot of communities are. While the maximum you can request is seventy percent, a lot of communities are reducing that request. Because they're realizing that oftentimes people who wanted to stay in the community have already moved out. And the local preference actually serves to um, keep them out. Um, but that's, you know, a conversation that we would certainly have and ultimately. Um. Include the preference that the town wanted to include in our marketing plan.
Thank you. Um, what do you expect the rents would be on these apartments?
I can uh, I can speak to that, so um. The rents, uh, the rents which are, you know, mandated, uh, like everything else, um, for the sixty percent units. Uh, for a one-bed, it would be about. About twelve fifty, um, keeping in mind that these are updated every year and we're a few years out. Um, a two-bed would be about fifteen hundred. Um, and a three-bed would be around seventeen to seventeen fifty. Um. And the reason I started with the sixty percent rents is because that is a rent that's paid. Entirely by the tenant, uh, so like a typical market rate rent. Uh, the thirty percent AMI units, which we have a smaller uh, share of. They would be attached to a project-based voucher, um, and so basically. That tenant would only pay thirty percent of their income, whatever it was. And then the state subsidizing agency would pay the rest to the owner. Up to the mandated, the HUD mandated fair market rent.
Okay. So the total. Alright, so that's more more on the business side, the total would be the fair market market rent, is that the same as, just curiosity, is that the same as the fifteen hundred seventeen fifty and so forth? That you just mentioned, or is that a higher threshold because it's market rate as opposed to sixty percent?
Yeah, it's 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 close actually, um, but it often is a little bit higher.
Um, have you figured out how many apartments would be in the mansion itself?
We're saying three to four, based on our architect's very preliminary study of the size.
I assume that would be second and third floor?
Yes.
First floor, okay.
Not on the first floor.
Right. Something I'd ask to consider, if um, perhaps you take those three or four and make them exclusively senior only. Might provide some way of um. Of balancing some of the need in the community, if that's if that's feasible within your financial approach. Um. How would? The public use the public space on that would be available on the first floor, would they need to reserve it, is it just open twenty-four seven or? Yeah, I think you said that there would be no cost to the community for using that, how does that get managed? Um, and related question, do any of your current properties have similar publicly available space?
So I'll I'll answer uh, the first part of that question and then I'll let Caitlin if she wants to add to it, but basically the concept at this point. Um, is that the first floor would be available um, for reservation. By any Northborough organization or resident who wanted to do something that was compatible with the scale. And occupancy that's allowed within that space. Um, so we had been brainstorming, it might be a place for a baby shower or a book reading or a film screening or these kinds of events. Um, and it would be no cost, uh, we would simply use the reservation so that our property management could. You know, manage the comings and goings of people and make sure that the place was kept clean and that kind of stuff. Um, as far as what we do at other properties, um, I'm gonna ask Caitlin uh, to speak to this because I think there might be.
Sure, so yes, so um, in. Um, our project in Newton, um, we are planning to have a large community space that opens up onto the historic. Um, onto a patio and because of the historic nature of the property, we are proposing, um. Uh, you know, um, plaques, um, and other um. Ways to honor the history of the building itself, um, so it was important to make sure that the public had access. Um, to um. To be able to be in the space and to be able to remember the history of the site, so it's certainly something that we have um, done in the past and as Derek said, we would. It would be on a managed basis, you know, an appointment basis so that um, you could reserve the space and it would be um. Overseen by the management company, um. When it was, when it was occupied.
Um, so two follow-up questions on that, so the Newton property, that's something that's underway now, it's not something that's completed and available to the public yet?
That's correct, we have not started construction yet.
Okay, so that's a, that's a ways off. Um, and I I imagine there would need to be some limits. Um, you know, if if. Three hundred and sixty-five residents of Northborough each wanted to reserve it for one day, um, that might be a little too much for you. Um, I would ask you to, you know, maybe give a little bit of thought as far as. Um, a frequency and a house specifically that would that would be dealt with. Um, I also at the same time would hope that it wouldn't be, you know, once or twice per year it could be used. Something, something in the middle, but uh, I'd appreciate if you could give that some thought and come back to us with uh, something in a little bit more details. Um. I think Scott had answered, asked the question, or maybe it was Jason at the beginning of this about um, school impact. Um, maybe it was Kristen, I I don't remember, I don't think that got answered as far as. Um, for your existing products that are multi-generational that have a lot of two and three-bedroom, majority of two and three-bedroom apartments. What numbers are you seeing for school-age kids in there? Because certainly many of the questions we're getting. Are from the impact to the schools from uh, development like this.
Sure, so um, just in terms of the the state of. Um. Enrollment in Northborough schools, um. Recently, so our understanding based on the data from the Massachusetts Department of Education is that enrollment. Um, has declined about six percent, um, since twenty eighteen. Um, which is about ninety-eight students. Um, and there have been a number of of studies, um, in Sudbury and other, you know, so suburban mode. Uh, um, areas about the impact of schools of new housing development, so that data is all available. Um. And it's lower than you might think, I think is the headline. Um, but just to give you a specific example for our Glen Brookway project in, uh, excuse me, property in Medway. Uh, which was forty-eight family units with a similar bedroom mix to what we're proposing at the White Cliffs. Um, what we saw was that there were um. Thirteen kids, oh my gosh, okay, my office lights are turning off, they're telling me to go home. Uh, thirteen kids enrolled in the schools. Um, and the kind of average kid, uh, number of kids per household was um. At Glen Brookway was zero for the one bedrooms, um, point four kids for the two bedrooms and then one child for the three-bedroom apartments. Um, so I guess, but I. Think that the, you know, among the five schools, um, in Northborough. Adding about thirteen kids, um, when there has been a recent decline of ninety-eight students, um. You know, there might be um. Room to absorb those additional students. And excuse me, I'm gonna wave my office, my arms around for a second.
Yeah, sure, understood. Congratulations on being well-lit again. Um, yeah, I want to make sure I understood uh, one bit of the presentation that um, within. The schedule you're proposing now, you're talking about taking ownership in, did I read right that it was November twenty twenty-five?
Yes, that is, that is what we have right now.
Okay, um, so I imagine the town would be responsible for. Maintaining and upkeeping and ensuring the building until then, or is there some other avenue for for to deal with those costs? And if you don't know the answer again, that's that's fine, we can figure some of these things out later.
Right, I mean, I think generally this is um, you know, an early-stage proposal, um, if we are selected, we need to. You know. Get in the building and really do some due diligence and really understand that the costs. Um, so it's. Um, it's it's hard to say kind of, you know, what the budget could or couldn't absorb at this moment. Um, but you know, we understand the pressure that the the maintaining the house is putting on the town. Um, uh, we have had the experience at our other properties, um, in Hudson and Newton where it was a town on a property that the town did. Um, continue to pay those costs through closing. Um, I think they were just grateful to have. A viable project on the line, um, within a defined timeline and we're willing to kind of, um. You know, take on the costs in the short term to make sure that that, the proposal was able to move forward.
Sure, and I I don't want to imply that we would not be willing to pay those, but we would have to understand obviously the budget implications from our end as well. Um. You you'd made mention, I think, earlier in the in the meeting about being willing to do an in-person presentation, some sort of a presentation to the public. Um, I would encourage you to think about being willing to do that um, before a formal selection. Um. To, I I think that might be helpful for the board. In making a decision on that to uh, to hear from more of the public, you'll certainly hear from some in a few minutes when we open this up for public comment. Um, but I would think about that. Um, and my last question for you is. Um, follows up on something that um, that uh, Laurie mentioned earlier at the beginning of this about um, a commercial. And and everything else, whether you gave any thought or if you have any projects that have mixed commercial and residential. With the thought of maybe there's some commercial value to some of the first floor.
Yeah, so that is something that we have considered, um. A lot in this particular case, we do also have um, commercial at um, our other properties, for example, we have a daycare at one of them. The the difficulty without getting too far in the weeds is that the way that tax credits are calculated, you need to be able to include costs into the basis in order to get a tax credit on them, like to get the funding. And we cannot include commercial spaces into that basis. So we basically need to exclude all of the renovation cost for whatever the square footage of a commercial space is from our funding calculation. And also, we can't underwrite a commercial lease it with our financiers, so we cannot, we can't say we think that this property will rent for X dollars down the road, they won't let us use that in our budget.
Okay, thank you, good explanation. I have a couple of questions that might be more for staff, and again, if answers aren't are readily available, that's completely fine. I know that the the proposal calls for eight hundred thousand dollars from CPA funds for to to go towards this, I don't know whether community preservation has given any discussion to that. Again, it's fine if they haven't, but I think before we made a decision, we'd want to hear from them. As far as they're they're thinking on that.
Laurie has some information, sure.
I'm not sure if there's anybody from the CPC on this meeting, so I'll speak on their behalf. So this was discussed at a couple of the Community Preservation Committee meetings. There was discussion about the fact that there is already a certain amount of money that is restricted for use for affordable housing only. So I believe that number is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand. A portion of that is leftover monies that had been previously allocated to the Affordable Housing Corporation that Rick Lee, of course, is a part of. And he submitted a support letter to you folks, I know he is still interested in using some funds for his purposes for for his corporation. However, I believe, like I said, the total amount that is currently on hands, when you include the seventy seven thousand that will be allocated for affordable housing at the April two thousand twenty three town meeting is just just shy of eight hundred thousand, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you.
Mr. Bear, Mr. Campbell is in the audience.
Yes, yeah, I just I just noticed that, John, I'm gonna bring you in voice only, just in case you're not prepared for for video, or perhaps the chief brought you in, that's fine, John, if you could unmute, and if you so desire, turn on your camera and let us know if you have any additional thoughts from the community preservation side.
Sure, thank you, can you hear me now?
We hear you, welcome.
Good, I'll leave it at that, I don't see the camera option coming up for me anyway, but just to follow on what Laurie said. At our last meeting, the committee took a path to approve those projects that were already in play, one of which was being the bond payment for the purchase of the White Cliffs property that originated from the twenty sixteen town meeting vote. And when we were through, we had in reserves over eight hundred thousand dollars, and we did keep that in mind for the case that it might be needed for this project be approved. And it's also consistent with the fact that affordable housing and historic preservation are two areas that we're constantly striving to do more in, where CPA has been used more often or a higher percentage, I should say, for open space and recreation projects in Northborough. So that was our overall thinking, and in addition to those reserves, as Laurie correctly stated, the previously town-approved affordable housing monies that are held by the town but available for use by contract for the Northborough Affordable Housing Committee are are also available if needed, so in conclusion, we made plans to afford the contribution that this project is looking for. And that was our stance as we left the CPC recommendations for this year.
Thank you, John, I appreciate you coming in, and I will I will note, just related to this, that we did get a letter from the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, and their request was to retain four hundred and seventy three thousand of the roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand for their uses, but at least from their perspective, two hundred and seventy nine thousand and change would be available for this, but again, that's, you know, there there will be discussions going forward. John, thank you, I'm gonna send you back to the attendee list now, thanks again. All right, I've been utilized the meeting for quite, oh, good, more questions, Kristen.
Hi, thank you, Mitch. So that that brought me back to, I had taken a screenshot during your presentation of this leveraging local funds slide. And I thought, wow, this is really great, but I guess this makes me, this remind, like, just even within our town, like, this eight hundred thousand dollars. We have two different opinions on whether or not this would all go to this project, if we were to work with you on this. I mean, could some of these look, some of these other funding sources, it looks like probably a lot of grants, right? What if they fell through, what if any of them fell through, what if few of them fell through, what, where does the money come from then?
So the way the the funding stack, the alphabet soup there is awarded is it's all done through the one stop funding application round. So we basically apply one time to the state, and then they internally would award all of these things at the same time, or none of them, they would not give us an incident, an insufficient portion of them.
Okay, okay, so so it's sort of like the common app, when you're applying to college now, you just apply, you fill out one application and but it's different, yeah, it's different in that you either get accepted everywhere, or you don't get accepted anywhere, so I I get, I'm using that as a metaphor, so what happens if they say no to everything, or are you just, well, I'm just gonna ask that question, what if they say no?
So I guess there's like a few tranches to this process, we need to be invited to apply. So we would fill out a pre-application first with which DHCD would review, and they would basically tell us, yes, you're ready, no, you're not ready. Then we would be invited into the January round, which again, under Baker had always been January, it may now be something else. And in that round would be when they would basically decide who gets the money, which projects and which don't. There is a rather frequent occurrence, which we said in our earlier presentation that they may not give you the money the first time you ask for it, because there is frequently more projects than available funding, and they tend to prioritize the ones that applied in previous years. So it's, it is often the case, or has often been the case, that you have to apply twice in order to get your funding. In the case, for example, of our Hudson project, we applied in the January round, we did not get it. But then they told us that we actually think you guys are really ready to go, so come back in what's called the mini round in September, and then they awarded it to us at that point.
Okay, so, and you feel like, I remember from talking to Lori Connors before in one of our meetings about, I think it was Dog Park Funding. She had got it before in another town, she kind of knew how it worked and knew that she was a good candidate for it. Do you feel like that's the case with you?
Yeah, we, so we have used this funding source on all of our projects that we've talked about here today. And we do feel like this project is a great candidate for that, for a number of reasons. Fifty two units is great, the fact that there's historic preservation component is very interesting. The fact that it's in Northborough, close to the town center. We do think that this is a really good candidate project. And also, if the town is willing to contribute the land and eight hundred thousand dollars, and if we have gotten our comprehensive permit through ZBA, I mean, at that point, we have really demonstrated to the state that there's a lot of support for this project, and they will. I mean, I can't say they'll give it to us, but it's as close as we're gonna get.
Okay, but don't jinx yourself, all right, thank you.
I muted myself there, any questions or comments from the board? Last question for me before we open it up to to some public comments. What, this is more of a staff question, I think, what town meeting actions are required in order to make this happen if the board goes forward, obviously, the board would have to take some action first, then the schedule that was there showed a September town meeting. What articles and what what approval thresholds would they need, if you're aware of that, probably a question for either John or Laurie?
In terms of dealing with real property, so just a purchase and sale, the conditions of that would be subject to approval by town meeting. We would also, at some point along this process, have to define the preservation restriction. And I don't know if that would be done as part of the purchases, that'd be a probably more likely a component of the purchase and sale. But basically, the the deal would need to be would need to be approved by town meeting.
That a fifty percent threshold or a two thirds threshold?
I believe it's a simple majority.
Thanks, it was a question that was brought up to me, so I wanted to ask that. Okay, if everyone's okay with it, I'm gonna start to bring in members of the public that have additional questions. Firsthand, that's been up for a little while, Anna Sir Video, and I'm gonna bring you in right now, if you could unmute and identify yourself, and I I do want to say thank you to Anna, we have we receive a lot of letters on the board, very rarely do letters come in signed by over two hundred residents, and Anna was was the author that that took the energy, so I I that's an impressive feat, so so thank you very much, again, if you could identify yourself, your street address, and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Anna Sir Video, and I'm at twenty six Stratton Way. And I submitted a petition signed by almost two hundred and fifty Northborough residents. The citizens who signed the petition felt strongly that the Metro West housing project of fifty two apartments is not in the best interest of the town, its potential impact would be devastating to this area for many reasons. The White Cliffs Committee asked no questions about traffic impacts or had reports submitted regarding it. No questions were asked about the impact of additional goods and services such as police, fire, school, and intersection reengineering that would impact our taxes, no breakdown of expected additional tax burdens were submitted or discussed. What does the tax, the town gain or lose in tax revenue? There's no discussion of the purchase offer of only a hundred dollars. CPC funds were allocated in two thousand sixteen to purchase the land and the mansion for historic preservation. Add to that, Metro West asked for an additional eight hundred thousand of CPC funds from the Affordable Housing Bank with a potential continued ask indefinitely. The REAS Committee spent little time discussing the pros and cons of the other three, of the other two offers, rather than going to town meeting before the RFP was written and asking the town what they wanted. This advisory advisory committee voted four to one for Metro West. Why is this being considered as the most viable option? Mansion restoration was not discussed, how does the project preserve the land and building or really benefit Northborough?
Anna, thank you very much. Next up, we have Lindsay Neistrom, bring you in, again, if you could say your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Neistrom, I live at Eight Warren Drive, I'm kind of on the outskirts of where this project is going to be occurring. I kind of had a lot of the similar issues that Anna actually just addressed. You know, you had talked about earlier that after maybe this was approved, you were gonna be looking at a traffic plan. You know, I live right in the corner of East Main and Warren and and twenty, and I see police officers all the time there responding to accidents from Route twenty in Maple, Route twenty in Brigham, and now you're gonna be adding a third avenue in there for accidents. And I know that you say people go to work at different times, but let's be realistic, everybody kind of travels between seven and nine AM and three to five PM. And if you have ever looked at a map of where Maple and Brigham have are coming, it's two opposite directions of traffic, like colliding into each other, and now you're adding a third aspect. The other main concern I really truly have is the destruction of property that's gonna occur when I'm assuming you're gonna be blasting, because it's a lot of ledge over there. And I'm wondering if you're gonna be offering pre-blast surveys to everybody in their homes. These homes around the surrounding area are from very, like nineteen sixty, nineteen fifty. I moved into this neighborhood because it reminded me of home, and I wanted to bring my children up in a residential area that reminded me of home, and you know, this apartment complex is gonna be turning it into just something that isn't a beautiful neighborhood that I came to live in. And besides some of the damage, you know, you mentioned that you expect about thirteen students to be increasing in those school systems, was that correct? Can somebody let me know if that was true? So I personally am a single mother, and I am somebody who would probably benefit from a low income housing or could have, but I've worked really hard, and and I ended up owning my own home. I think it's unrealistic to believe that it's only thirteen students. And I also think the desk, the Desi can say, you know, we've had a ninety eight student decrease. And I don't believe that's realistic either, I think any parent who has a child in the school system, who has children with special needs, and when they're told your child doesn't receive those special needs that day because they were too busy with other students, shows that the schools are overwhelmed, or when your own child has to be removed from their own school to go to another school because you're going to be moving and can't remain in that school and not be with their sibling, and not with their friends, there's an issue there. I do believe the schools are overwhelmed, and I think, I think affordable housing is great. I think this project is great, I don't think it's in the right area. I think it's going to the wrong place, I don't believe it belongs in this neighborhood, and I think there are many reasons why it doesn't. And it also sounds like Northborough residents aren't even gonna get the first opportunities to take advantage of this, these units, even if they come to town, which I think is important, if we are gonna build something in our community, it should be available first for Northborough residents, so I feel like there's many different things going on here that we're not addressing, and we're gonna address as we go forward, will these need to be addressed before we go anywhere? And, you know, as someone who's gonna be living right next to it, I just don't see it being fit for our community in this particular place.
Thank you very much.
Question.
I'm sorry, was someone speaking? Or I I think Lizzy was was posing, Lizzy, I apologize if I cut you off, if you had anything else you wanted to add, raise your hand again. We'll go on to the the next person, Victor Jasek. Victor, if you could identify yourself and say your street address, please.
Hello, my name is Victor Jasek, I'm at One Kent Drive, also in the backyard of this potential development. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, I'll be speaking in opposition of the privatization and housing development plan for White Cliffs. My wife and I moved to Northborough about five years ago, and at the time, we were excited to hear that the town was investing in the community by approving two point four million dollars of public taxpayer money to save the White Cliffs property. Since then, we've been disappointed at the shortsighted request for proposals that the White Cliffs Committee has entertained. I believe these proposals are merely an easy way out of dealing with the property by passing it to a commercial developer, and do not provide any significant value to the community at large. Our community's taxpayers would be taken advantage of to provide more than three million dollar discount for another large development. Our community's taxpayers would be taken advantage of to provide more than three million dollar discount for another large development project. The housing proposals at White Cliffs will realistically limit the number and diversity of community members who may enjoy the space to its residents only. Additionally, many town operations such as schools, libraries, and roads provide no direct income or self funding. Yet we agree to fund them because they provide real value to the community. Historic and open space do the same. We cannot build on every scrap of green grass in town and expect to enjoy our community with no remaining open space. If you've visited the city recently, you understand how a community composed of nothing but parking lots, warehouses, commercial and private property. Feels alien and unwelcoming. We do not need quantity. We need quality of space. I challenge the residents of Northborough, the White Cliffs Committee, and the Select Board to strive for quality. I challenge us to invent an even more creative, inclusive, and efficient use of the space. Where seniors, young professionals, and families from across town can all enjoy one of the few remaining pieces. Of historical green space is a public resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Victor. Um, we have a number of other other hands raised. I'd like to get to everyone. I'd ask that that speakers think about. Comments that are additive rather than repetitive to previous speakers since we've got a bunch and. I'd be happy to hopefully, as I said, we'll get to everybody. Nicole Nicole Marr is next. Nicole, if you could identify yourself and state your street address, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole Marr and I live at forty four Western Terrace. I have a lot of concerns with this development. However, today I'm going to focus on the huge number of condo units being proposed and its impact on our schools. Fifty two units in total with thirty five being two bedrooms or larger. Metro West indicated that this would bring approximately thirteen school aged kill. School aged kids to town, which I find hard to believe. On February tenth, during the monthly superintendent parent advisory council meeting. I asked Superintendent Martineau if he had been contacted by any development group regarding the White List. White Cliffs property. He said, no, he had not. He also added that in the past, he has often been contacted by development groups such as the Avalon Bay property. It's very alarming to me that Metro West did not take these same steps to discuss with our superintendent. What impact this huge development would have on our schools? In the eleven years that we've lived in town, class sizes have grown significantly. My eleven year old was in first grade. When when my eleven year old was in first grade, there were two classes with about sixteen kids in each. When my nine year old was in first grade, there were two classes with about twenty one kids in each class. And this year, for my six year old, there are three first grade classrooms with at least twenty kids in each class. These children are being bussed to this classroom from all over town because so many other classrooms are packed in our schools. This increase over the years is significant. And the Metro West development fifty two condos would bring so many more children to our schools. This greatly impacts our education system, the cost of busing, and the taxes that our citizens pay. I know you're not voting tonight, but please consider voting against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Michael Hirsch, you're up next.
Can you hear me?
We hear you fine, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Hirsch. I live on nineteen Smith Road in Northborough. I know that a popular phrase is if you build it, they will come. But I'm not convinced that putting this development where it's located. Uh, is going to generate the kind of downtown redevelopment that. Is going to support this development. We don't have a public transportation system here in Northborough. And the closest grocery store or supermarket would probably be either. The Northborough Walmart or Wegmans, which is not necessarily the the best type of grocery store for. Affordable housing residents. And I don't think that the retail that's downtown currently would support them. There's really no place to go other than a pizza place, a couple of delis, maybe a convenience store. So I don't really see this being a viable project unless we really, really coordinate with the master plan. Implementation Committee and the zoning board and all of the different silos that we have within city government. To really think proactively. What would these people be able to do? Living in that facility. I think they'll just be on the road all the time, going all over the place, not necessarily in Northborough. I don't think they're going to generate the kind of economic development that's been projected here. And without that, I think we're going to even take a bigger bath on the fact that now we spent one point six million dollars to buy this. Now we're. Selling it for a hundred dollars and adding in eight hundred thousand dollars to help. Develop it in this proposal. So I would urge people to really. Look carefully at this proposal and hopefully find other uses for that beautiful property.
Thank you very much, Michael. Next up, we have Erica Zeiger. Erica, if you could state your address, unmute yourself, please. There you go.
Hello, Erica Zeiger to Stratton Way. I wanted to reiterate that I agree with all of the callers. Having kids in the schools, I have seen room closets turned into offices for specialists. That have been needed. Um, but I wanted to talk about. A letter, the uh, the letter that was in the selectman's packet today from the North Borough Affordable Housing Corporation. It says the N A N A H C requests that the four hundred and seventy three thousand reserved for its future use not be included in the MCD project. And that the town negotiate further with MCD on its need for town funding for this project. Especially since the town would make the White Cliffs property available to MCD at no cost. No cost or a hundred dollars. How is that possible? It's worth, what, two point four million dollars and we're going to just give it away? That just seems strange to me. Um, so I looked into it a little bit and. There's the Ten Taxpayer Suit Act, which says you can't give municipal property away. So any thoughts on that and how that is possible? Two point four million dollars is a lot of money to give away.
So Erica, oh, sorry. If I thought you were done, please continue.
I was just going to say, so that is one of my concerns that we are just giving away. This piece of land which could be used for so many different things. So that's it. I just wanted to kind of bring that up, especially to the town and then also. The public meetings that were talked about prior to the RFP. I must have missed those because I've been here for ten years now and. I don't recall any public meetings. Um, there was the White Cliff Committee meetings, which I don't believe were. Open to and to the public before Zoom and they're at ten in the morning. As you noted, it's a expensive community. Most of us are at work at ten in the morning. So, um. I just want to reiterate, we are not in favor of this project and specifically the schools, the traffic. And giving the land away.
Thank you very much, Erica.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, just responding to the legal question, obviously, the town wouldn't proceed with anything like this without consulting town council and make sure we we did everything properly there. Uh, Tom Riordan, you're up next. Tom, if you could identify yourself and state your address.
Yeah, Tom Riordan, seven Sunset Drive. I'm also a member of the former White Cliffs Committee. I believe we've completed our work. I wanted to add some context to the comments about student enrollment in Northborough. We are on a twenty year decline in enrollment. It peaked in two thousand with two thousand thirty eight students. We are currently in two thousand twenty two at fifteen fifty eight. That's total student enrollment. Now. All this information is available on the state website. Also, the New England School Development Council has done an analysis. For to help the Northborough schools project enrollment in the next ten years. And they project after a twenty year decline, we may possibly have a five percent increase in student enrollment in the Northborough schools. And the Northborough Public Schools Grade Level Configuration Study has also used these same. Figures from NASDAQ. And our student population may increase five percent. But if you're adding maybe fifteen to twenty from a fifty two unit development. That's hardly anywhere near the seventy five student enrollment increase they project over the next ten years. So I think this notion of the schools being overcrowded is a misunderstanding that the neighborhood school model. Results in there being more students in a neighborhood than can be accommodated by that neighborhood school. Therefore, they have to move students from one neighborhood to another school. This is not in. Because our stu- our student population. Is exceeding the capacity of the schools. It's because of internal model of the student neighborhood model. So. I just think the that this needs to be discussed at the proper forum before the town meeting. And we use need to use the proper data to evaluate this issue in terms of impact. Thank you.
Very much, Tom. Next up, we have Beth. I don't see a last name on there. So as I bring you in, if you could identify yourself, including your last name and your address, please.
Hi, yep, this is Beth Nicholson. I'm at forty eight Western Terrace. Uh, I want to thank everybody here for all the great background information. Um, I'm new to this entire discussion. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I did just want to echo. The thoughts of of my neighbors that have spoken before me. Um, I really want to urge everyone to think, you know, even more so about this proposal and when the time comes to ultimately vote against it. Um, you know, I appreciate the situation that that we are in and and that, you know, we're trying to. Uh, work to find a way to do what's best for this property. However, you know, I think that there's a lot of things that were mentioned here today that. Are, you know, we'll deal with it as it comes. We'll deal with it down the line. Uh, we'll analyze it as we go, and these are things that need to be figured out ahead of time. Uh, including how that will be funded when specific. Specifically, uh, as it relates to uh, traffic, uh, as our, as my neighbors mentioned, uh, traffic at Route twenty. Is not a good intersection. Uh, it's already extremely dangerous. And when you're adding in a development like this, uh, we're going to just compound that problem. So getting that figured out beforehand, I think, is really critical to this project. Uh, in addition, you know, when we speak about the schools, uh, speaking about the schools as a whole from K through twelve is one thing. Uh, speaking about it at the elementary school level is something very different. They are most certainly overcrowded. Uh, they're most certainly overrun. Uh, and we have students that aren't able to go to school with their siblings and with their neighbors. Uh, because of the way uh, that we are right now and adding in additional even ten students, much less fifteen or twenty or more. Uh, is just going to compound that problem again. Uh, so I I just urge everyone to. Really make sure that everything is in place, including how we're going to fund it now and in the future. Uh, before any votes to proceed is uh, is is going forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. All right, a couple of people left. Carol, again, uh, no last name on your on your Zoom name, which is fine. If you could identify yourself and state your address. Unmute yourself, please. Carol, you'll you're still muted, so we can't hear you. Maybe a couple more seconds to to find that button. Going once. Okay, apologize, Carol. I'm going to send you back into the attendees list. Amanda Amanda DeRozier Mallett, bringing you in. If you could, again, identify yourself and address, please.
Sure. My name is Amanda DeRozier Mallett. I live at twelve oh seven Avalon Drive here in Northborough. I was born and raised in town. The only reason that I am raising my children here in town is because of the affordable housing at Avalon. I live in the affordable housing prior to this. My family and I were living with my parents. There was seven of us in a four bedroom. It it was not meant for that. My parents grew up in town. My. I I have generations of my family have been here in town. My dad grew up on Saint James Drive. He he spent his winters sledding on the hills of White Cliffs. Um, for those people that are saying, hey, it's not going to be open to the public. That's not fair. It hasn't been open to the public since nineteen eighty five, when the LaCava family built it, as far as I know. Um, not built it, but when they bought it. Um, the first time I ever remember going into the White Cliffs was for a friend's wedding in my late twenties. Um, it was a strictly a function hall. So if you weren't going for a wedding or a baby shower or anything, you couldn't go. I just want to say that I completely support the Metro West plan. I think it's. A great use of the space. I think that North Row needs more affordable housing. And I think we need the White Cliffs and the White Cliffs doesn't have more time. If we don't go ahead with this project. I don't know that we're going to have the White Cliffs building to save. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. I'm going to request, but not insist upon, that if you haven't already raised your hand, you think about saving. Your comments for a future meeting, but we do have four more people to quickly get to. Norm Corbin. Norm, welcome.
Can you hear me fine?
Hear you great.
Hi, I'm Corbin at thirty five Whitney Street and I was on the White Cliffs Committee. What I'm finding interesting with the discussions this evening is the concern that the town invested two point seven million and then there might be requests for not eight hundred thousand and all that money and that's very expensive. If we don't go with this program where we're we're going to have to invest another eight hundred thousand dollars, what is Plan B? Any investments to get that building up and running is going to be six to eight to nine thousand, nine, excuse me, million dollars. And I want to read something that I wrote recently. The Northborough taxpayers may not be willing to take on the million dollars expenses of White Cliffs cost. Given the significant capital improvements on the horizon, such as the fire station, athletic fields upgrades, upgrading the grammar schools, the new town hall, plus upgrades to the. Multi, excuse me, upgrades to the existing town hall, multi-year, multi-phase downtown revitalization projects. We have a lot of money that's coming down the pipe with expenses. So really, the the key concerns of the town, and this is the town, not town hall, but this is the town community. The key concerns of the town in are and should be schools, safety, financial stability. The White Cliffs will never be a priority in this community. If someone thinks that they're going to be able to go in and get CPA money for another five to eight million dollars, I can promise you that's not going to happen. That money will not come through. There's too many other important aspects to this town. And on another topic, if I got a minute, I want to talk a minute about fundraising because somebody was thinking of putting together a nonprofit. So let's talk about nonprofits for a little while. How will a nonprofit be able to generate the kind of millions of dollars that the town needs? There are many opportunities for grants that specialize in historic preservation. I have a list of hundreds of them. The largest ones tend to be in the order of several hundred thousand dollars, maybe. Most of them require max funding. So you're not going to get the kinds of dollars you're going to need for those millions of dollars of improving the building. I just suggest contact the president of the Northborough Historical Society. They're a nonprofit with history requires uh, goals. And talk to them about all the challenges they had to just get some small money for historic preservation funding. There's a meager pool of grants for restoration of historic properties is very small and it's very competitive. And again, most grant programs are in the ten thousand to a hundred thousand dollar range. So I want people to recognize that. If we don't do this program. We don't have White Cliffs. In five years from now, that building will be in dire shape. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norm. John Marr, bringing you in. You could identify yourself, please.
Yep, um, thanks for your time tonight. John Marr, forty four Western Terrace. I I just, I have some issues, I think, just in general about. Public communities buying buildings that the market basically assessed as valueless at the time, but. That's neither here nor there. And also, to to, I would state that this building is falling apart currently. I'm driving by, you can see the bricks of the the fire or the chimney kind of falling apart in the light. But I just really struggle like, okay, I'm definitely for against the town owning property for the sake of. You know, someone's how they feel and about the past of the building and whatnot. But now that we're there, I think that we're essentially giving everything away. I mean, for forty B, we definitely need affordable housing. It's a crisis in the country. I totally get it. But forty B is for investors that are basically trying to offset their tax liabilities. So think, you know, high net worth individuals and the like. So, you know, as as we say, this is a nonprofit and the like, and the company's a nonprofit, I would just highlight that they are in the in the in the business of making money. I would, I would also want to get a better sense of what is the actual tax liability. There was a comment made earlier that it was a simple NOI divided by cap rate. Or an income cap approach to that. That is not the case. There's also a land assessment. And so when I say this, it's like, let's, do we need to rush into this? Is it something that we should take a step back and say, is the preservation of White Cliffs needed? I get it. It's a beautiful building. It hasn't been used. But that that land is valuable as well, and I think we need to keep that in mind. And I echo everyone's comments on here about safety. And to use a sample set of three properties, basically to indicate what the. Increase in student population, that's just a complete margin for error. And I'd also highlight that this would be the largest prod- project for Metro West. And so, you know, that needs to be highlighted as well as that. You know, is this company, is this partner basically that we're inviting into our town? Is this the appropriate partner? To basically give this money away. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next up, we have Amy Paretzky. Welcome, Amy.
Hi, can you hear me?
We hear you fine. State your address, please.
Sure, Amy Paretzky, forty-seven Indian Meadow Drive. I actually have a couple of questions to start with. They mentioned that the first floor reservations were to Northborough residents. What about the residents that live there? Do they have access? To the first floor, or do they have to make reservations too? I don't know if anyone can answer that.
Why don't we just collect the questions then? And the the developer can can answer them either after this or at some future meeting.
Okay, so I guess that was one question, if the residents have access. Because I noticed there were some like play areas and some of the pictures that they showed from Medway. And I know at least for my kids, they'd be like sliding down the balconies. I mean, the banisters and. I don't know if there's crayons in there and the first floor of White Cliffs is really, as they know, it's specialty woods and. Very unique. I just didn't know if it was open to the public and open to the residents twenty-four seven. Another questions went to the taxes. I guess maybe they can look, how much do they pay in Medway? Would give us an idea of how much they would pay here. Another thing I think that the town needs to look at is this is fifty-two affordable housing units. Right now, we have the MBTA communities in front of us. We're told that we're supposed to add seven hundred and fifty housing units to Northborough. Ten percent of those can be affordable, which would bring our number up by seventy-five new affordable housing units. Without having to put down three point two million dollars. It's a lot of housing all at once. So I think as committees, we have to look at how much housing is going to be in front of our town in the next couple of years. Another thing I heard was that White Cliffs Rehab, they're thinking it would be three million dollars. I'm not sure why we're always told it's five or eight or ten million dollars. There was never an analysis of the exact numbers. I would love for the town to get a net analysis of what it would cost to get the code up to code, the building up to code. We just get guesses. Okay, another one to the downtown economics. It's really the product that brings, that makes the businesses thrive downtown or in any place. I'm not sure it's adding a lot of housing to the downtown will actually make it thrive. Avalon is a perfect example. They added three hundred and eighty-two apartments. And the businesses like Wegmans and CJ Maxx, the businesses that they love up there stay in business. The other businesses, even though there are three hundred and eighty-two apartments, if it's not a popular item, they go out of business. And to finish, I did write a letter to the board today. I think you all got it. It talked about being against any formal vote, but I think we've we've heard tonight that there won't be a formal vote. So I won't go into those details. I wanted to reiterate that the warrant article in two thousand and sixteen. Was for two point four million for the acquisition and purchase of White Cliffs using historical preservation funding. It didn't use affordable housing funding. So I do think there needs to be a public hearing where it's advertised and people can ask questions and give input. Because I think there are certain people who knew about the meeting tonight. But I don't think it was broadcast around the town that any votes were going to be taken tonight. And I I understand you said there wouldn't be. But I do think you need public input. The DBVW presentation stated that event space was the best choice and housing wasn't.
Amy, if I could request that that you wrap up your comments so that.
Sure, I am. I'm just going through my letter to see what I hasn't been hit on yet.
Okay.
That's what I'm doing. I'm just going down.
We did, we did receive your letter, so the board does have that.
Sure. Yep. I just want to close with, we're not desperate. According to the May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two minutes. The annual carry costs of the site are fifteen to twenty thousand. Maybe we need to take time and really look into the questions that were been asked today. And that's about all I have. Everything else has been answered. I want to thank them for their presentation. And I think a lot of people had some really great comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Rick Leaf. Rick, welcome to our meeting. If you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay, unmuted. My name is Rick Leaf. I'm thirty Wiles Farm Road. And I'm a member of the the Board of the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. Just a couple of quick. Clarifications here. This thing about the eleven point four percent affordable that we are SHI is. Calculated at right now compared to the six percent actual affordable. And we talked about Avalon Bay. The key thing there is that. This, the state allows, when you do a affordable housing development for rental units. That only twenty-five percent of the units have to be rented at an affordable price. But a hundred percent of the units can count towards the inventory. So because Avalon Bay was all rental at three hundred and eighty-two units. Ninety-six units are rented at an affordable rate. And the other two hundred eighty-six units are rented at market rate. So the key thing there is rental development. Towns that have all of their units in the SHI that are homeownership. Then the, there is no difference between their percentage of units are affordable and the and the percentage that's counted. But if you have rental developments and you have rental units. That have done under forty B, the market rate units count. So the thing that got us over the ten percent in Northborough. Was we did a rental development with Avalon for three hundred eighty-two units. And although only ninety-six are rented at affordable rates. The other two hundred eighty-six units count towards the inventory. So it's going to depend town by town. On whether you have rental units counted in your SHI or not. In the Northborough, the large preponderance of our housing units. Are these three hundred eighty-two units at Avalon. And we were well below ten percent until the Avalon project was was put in place. So the six percent number is the is the affordable rental units at Avalon, plus all the other affordable units, either rental or homeownership. That we have in the town of Northborough. There's also some comments around, how can Northborough people actually get into these units? And there was some comment made around local preference. Caitlin mentioned the fact that the state allows up to seventy percent. Local preference, that would mean that if the town decided that's what they wanted to do. When their units were placed for availability in the marketplace. Seventy percent of the units would be available for local residents. If in fact seventy percent of the applicants, you know, were local people. So there is a local preference ability there. And what the local preference would be would be a decision that we've made. Between the town and the developer as to how many units we've wanted local preference for. But there certainly would be the opportunity for Northborough residents to have first dibs on these units to whatever percentage. We decided up to a maximum of seven seventy percent that the state allows. I guess the other thing is that. That when you take a look at the housing mix of the town of Northborough right now. Basically, we've been developing for a long period of time, large homes on large lots. That have attracted a particular type of demographic into the town of Northborough. And as our population is aging, we're finding that certain people are having a hard time staying in the homes that they have. They can't afford other homes that are in town. And we have people, as been mentioned, as people who work in town, municipal employees, and even our own children. Who grew up in town that want to live here and can't find the opportunity. And although there are lots of different ways to get at this. The intergenerational approach that's being proposed here by Metro West. A mix of one and two and three bedroom apartments opens up the opportunity for many different kinds of demographics to take advantage of the development. And with local preference, gives the ability for quite a few people in Northborough to apply for these units if they so desire. So my feeling is that this is a good proposal and it does address a need in town. And it's something we ought to seriously consider going forward with. I definitely agree. There needs to be more discussion. Definitely more input and certainly a final discussion at a subsequent town meeting. But I think based on what's going on with the proposal. And the needs for housing in the town of Northborough, this provides another alternative type of housing that we have very little of. That could be beneficial to us going forward. So thank you for allowing me to make that comment.
Thank you very much, Rick. All right, I'm I'm going to ask that, or we've got four hands up. That have now five. All right, that's it. This will be the end. I'm not going to allow any any additional comments besides the five. And because we do have some additional agenda items, and as I said, there will be opportunity for public input at future meetings. Hopefully, some actual public meetings entirely and. But I'd ask you to to limit your conversations to to things we haven't heard before, and then we'll cap it up and move on with our meeting. Lisa Misselli, you're up next. Lisa, if you could identify yourself, please.
Lisa Misselli, thirteen Maple Street. Hi, very late in the day. I'm gonna say a couple of things. First off, I've heard, light a match to it, just tear it down, get rid of it, get it off our plates. It's a money pit. These are a few of the negative remarks have been said about the White Cliffs for quite some time. But the White Cliffs means a little bit different to more people than that. It means hometown pride. For this historic landmark. I was talking to a young forty-year-old that I met the other day, and he told me that one of the things that he felt. Was very important about moving to this town with this little young family, this that this landmark was here and he was quite proud of it. It's a hundred and forty-seven year old testament to when artisans and craftsmen from Europe, as well as the states. Were hired to build homes for captains of industry. Sir Stank Last and carve moldings and hand turn spindles about a few of the items of remark in this mansion. It's an architectural treasure and one we could be known, should be determined to save for generations to come. The town voted to preserve the grounds in the mansion. In the two sixteen. Town meeting, we invested two million four hundred thousand to do that. It's not just a facade that we need to save. It's the inside as well as the outside. It's the hope that we will recreate gardens and utilize the property for Northborough's residents and surrounding communities. There are grants and options to raise funds for historical rehabilitations that far better options than this three-story apartment complex. And the ten million dollars that is expected to cost to bring this back to life is not in a year or two years. It's over many years of time. So it's not an unrealistic amount of money that can be found in many different ways. And the last few things I like to say is I think we need the superintendent of schools to speak about the school population and not one of our architects. And that the affordable housing is wonderful. We should have it. We just shouldn't have it here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Again, I muted myself. Chris Hovey, you're up next. You can make some brief remarks after identifying yourself, please.
Hi, Chris Hovey, twenty-seven Brigham Street. I just had a quick question, just as far as fully exhausting all the options for what else is out there. I think it was John who had mentioned earlier about asking one of the representatives for. Trying to get on the list for receiving any proceeds from the newly. Put in place the millionaire's tax for being geared towards education and infrastructure and and those type of things. If that were to be the usage of the building to be some type of education center for. Say, you know, STEM-based research and education for high school and, you know, college students. Would that be something that could be worked into some of the other existing plans? Or or maybe something that could be added into the mix for an alternative? And if so, I might know someone that I could put you in touch with.
Thank you very much, Chris. Suzie Sizlicka. Suzie.
Hi, everyone. Emerson Road, Suzie Sizlicka. I was just calling in regarding the student aspect. I did want to say, I believe the number is a tad bit low. Even if it was the fourteen or sixteen amount that was stated. I do want to say that, say, it was only fourteen or sixteen students. Say they came in at the third, the third grade seems to be, there seems to be a baby boom across. Across Northborough and Southborough, from what I know. That grade does seem to be large. Where would we put those students? There's been an art room taken away in once in one school. I know that a closet in Proctor is now the speech pathologist's room. Our Zen room and for our behavior, our behavior specialist and something else in Proctor. Is now a classroom. We we don't have room. Someone else called in, oh, the population is much lower. He's not a parent anymore of students in this district. We have, we have student limits, especially coming out of the pandemic when there were, you know, half the kids weren't even in school. We have classroom limits. There's, schools are much different now. I I would love for you guys to take a tour if you want to see how crowded the schools are right now. And and you and you all have Peaslee coming down, coming down the budget. Your budget focus right now as well. So there, you do know that, you know, that is on the table as well. And maybe the architects do need to be made aware that there are schools. Besides Peaslee, we also have our Melican, our middle school that we have to be watching out for. But I'm just, I just wanted to briefly bring that up. So even if the number, even if this super low number was the truth, imagine it coming in at only like first and second graders. That's going to have a huge impact. I doubt it would be spread throughout the schools, but I think that Greg Martin or superintendent would need to be brought in. But thank you, thank you for not voting and really being thoughtful about this and, you know. Bringing the public more into it. I do appreciate that a lot. So thank you, everyone, and stay safe the next couple of days.
Thank you very much, Suzie. And because one of the residents lowered their hands, Laura Zaitin, you are the last one to comment on this item. Laura, if you could identify yourself.
Thank you. It's Laura Zaitin from seventeen Franklin Circle. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to comment because I've spent some time with my friends that are on fixed income. And a lot of times they'll comment that they really don't want. Friends that are on fixed income and a lot of times they'll comment that they really don't want to move. And to relocate, they would much rather age in place. And so while I appreciate this proposal and where you're going with it, I think that it would be more effective to look at ways to help them. And I know in the past, especially when we added those Avalon houses, that really increased. The tax burden on them and it made it less affordable in town. So I just want to be aware that there's impacts to this and I know we're trying to do the right thing. But I don't want to do it at the expense of the people that have been here forever. That's my little comment. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you very much, Laura. Alright, so that concludes um. That we do have, okay, Caitlin, you you have your hand raised, you're you're the presenter, you get to speak at any time you like. Uh Caitlin, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so I just wanted to make a point um. About um process because I imagine um what you're going to discuss next is is what what comes next. Um and I want to kind of set expectations about um what we can or can't do prior to selection. Um I understand that it seems like a chicken and egg where you want all of the answers before you can say yes. Um but I just, I want to highlight that. All that is being said yes to at this stage is entering into an agreement. That allows us to move into due diligence and community engagement. Um and the agreement is ultimately contingent on us getting the zoning approvals for the project. Um in our previous RFP selections, um we have been selected as developer because the town agreed that this is generally the. Direction that they want to go in, but understanding that there are more things to talk about. And more process ahead and the zoning board is really kind of the appropriate location to have discussions around traffic and other impacts. Um and I I say that uh because there are real reasons why we we can't do a lot of diligence before we have site control. You know, from small things like we have to have permission to access the property. We need to have an agreement about what kind of insurance we have and what kind of disturbance we um make on the site or not. Um but the big thing is that we have to have site control um to get predevelopment funding to fund all of that due diligence work. Um and none of our our lenders will provide us with that funding unless we have an agreement in place. Um so I guess I just, I I. We are not a hostile developer. Um and I am being really honest about our model and how our process works. Um but I just, I didn't um want there to be a misunderstanding of of how we are able to proceed uh prior to a vote from the select board.
Sure, I I appreciate that uh that clarification, that's helpful. Thank you very much, Caitlin. Um before we close this agenda item, any any members of the board have uh additional comments or questions for this evening? Scott?
So when do you forecast we would make a decision on this?
I'm sorry, your audio is breaking up for me. I don't know if that was just me or or your.
I'll say again, when do you forecast we would make a decision on this?
You asking uh myself or the developer?
I'm asking you, yeah, it's 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 our timetable. They've they've done their their work. They're looking for a decision from us. When will that occur?
So I I I don't know. Um. So you your schedule calls for a September town meeting, so we clearly need to be sometime before September, correct? Yeah, okay, so that's.
In terms of the proposal, the proposal is good. When does that expire?
Reasonable question, uh if you happen to know the, if if you have an expiration target on that Caitlin or or Derek?
Um I don't think that an an expert, a specific, excuse me, oh tired, a specific expiration date. Um was called out in the RFP. Um so I think that we would need to kind of. The town would need to determine when that moment comes and we would need to determine on our end when that comes. Um but just to be clear, you know, the. The negotiation of the agreement that it would eventually become a part of the town meeting warrant would need to be negotiated and that takes time. You know, probably several months. Um so while the the meeting was in September, we would need to build in time for for those discussions as well.
Completely understood, makes sense. Thank you. Okay, any other members of the board?
Yes, I I think a next step for us would be to lay out a timeline that would fit. Within um the town meeting, if if a special town meeting in September, lay that out very clearly so we know exactly when a decision has to be made. Because otherwise you miss a whole nother year cycle.
Yeah. Um yeah, as far as is our town schedule, we're preparing for a town meeting. Um our current town administrator is departing, so we're beginning a process with the certs. We have a. A couple of high priority things to deal with. I don't want to put you on the back burner, but we have to um we have to find a way to do everything all all at the same time. Uh so I I appreciate the um the time and the effort that your firm has put together in this and certainly the White Cliffs Committee has. Uh put together to bring us to the state, so um I would ask perhaps uh Caitlin, you and your team to work with staff. And um develop answers to some of the questions and concerns that were raised during the meeting. And then um then I'll work with the administration office and figuring out when the right time is for uh. Uh for us to revisit this again or to continue on on the process. Okay. Um being nothing else on this item, um I'll thank you again and um. Uh and your team can leave the meeting or 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 stay in the attendees list. I'll I'll send you back to the attendees list and you can decide. Um if you want to stick around for a little bit more. Oops, I almost said the wrong person because people are disappearing. All right, next on our agenda is. A discussion and possible vote regarding the mass development underutilized properties program relative to White Cliffs. Uh Lori Connors, if you could um. Tell us a little bit about this this grant.
Sure, um so you actually approached me uh about a week ago. To ask me about this particular grant program, which I was aware of. Um and I had previously spoken with Metro West. About this grant program because I thought it was a really good fit for the affordable housing project. So essentially, uh it is a grant program that is overseen by Mass Development. It's part of the one stop program that has been discussed previously this evening. Um the expression of interest is due actually this Friday. The full grant application is due on June second. Um it it would enable the town to apply for capital improvements to White Cliffs. Uh that are essential to the occupancy and increased occupancy of an existing structure. So it could be used for building stabilization. It could also be used for uh. Code compliance issues as well as accessibility improvements. Um they do have uh certain goals that are specifically stated. Um is what they're trying to accomplish with these grant funds and those are the elimination of blight. The support of the economic vitality of downtowns. Facilitating the production of workforce and low income housing. And increasing the number of commercial buildings that are accessible to people with disabilities. So although a match is not required, uh it is uh recommended. So I do suspect that it would make for a more competitive. Uh grant application if there was some type of municipal match. There is no set maximum award, but most of their uh awards uh vary between fifty thousand and one million dollars. Like if the town were to undertake this project, uh the town would have to pay prevailing wage. Um if uh. The Metro West developer were to apply for these grant funds, they would not have to pay prevailing wage. Um so there, if they were to apply for a million dollar project. Versus the town applying for a million dollar project. They would be able to uh do about thirty percent more with the million dollars. Than the town of Northborough could do with the same million dollars. Uh so I already explained the uh the deadlines. Uh it is anticipated that the grant awards would be made in October or November. And they are prioritizing projects that could start within two months of grand award. Um ideally, they want those projects completed within the fiscal year. Um so my understanding is by uh June thirtieth of that same year. So thinking about what type of work uh could be beneficial. Uh that would not um. Really interfere with the design should the Metro West project advance. Um I was thinking about exterior improvements. So of course the chimneys, uh obviously, one of the chimneys has already. Uh partially collapsed, uh it has been partially removed and the bricks are stored on site. Um so that building could be rebuilt, I mean, the chimney. And then there are the other uh three chimneys which are in various degrees of disrepair. Um one, I understand, is the most significant uh. As far as being in bad shape. Uh so chances are it would have to be taken down partially and then rebuilt similar to the one that has already had that happen. Um so another uh aspect that could be done with the grant funds is demolishing the additions. Um of course, uh we could say. How urgent it was because of the uh mold issue. There's significant water intrusion, as you know. Uh particularly with the dance floor is the the roof is in very poor shape. And uh it actually rains inside the building. So the removal of that addition in particular. Um is definitely something that should be done sooner versus later. So then the third uh task that could be done with this grant funds is of course buttoning up the building. Uh where the additions were removed. Um so of course. Previously, uh the exterior of the building. Was then made interior, so we will have to make it exterior again. So there's a certain amount of work associated with that. Um so of course there were windows that were removed, doors that were removed. Um and those would have to be put back in uh some way. So one of the negatives. Is of course, um the improvements have not yet been designed. So it's not clear um how the building should be buttoned up once the additions have been removed. Uh so the Metro West proposal. Um they would do that design. Uh so. If we were to proceed with this work, we'd just be guessing. So there is the risk that that work would then have to be undone. Uh whether it's Metro West or some other use. Um and then the other important thing to consider. Is that the work would have to be overseen by experts. Uh who understands the uh building requirements for historic buildings. Uh so certainly that expertise is not on the municipal staff. So we'd have to hire somebody um to oversee that process. So some other concerns that I have about going forward with this grant's application at this point. Is that uh when I spoke with Caitlin, she did indicate to me. That um because the construction would be underway, probably starting in February. And possibly finishing up at the end of June. That will delay their entire process. So they won't be able to meet the timeline that was stated in this application. Uh so that this would delay the period of time. Uh for them to do their design work and their due diligence. It's my understanding that they need to have an environmental assessment done. In order to qualify for the HUD funding that they will be seeking. So those are federal funds. Um and so no construction work can be underway during that period of time. So um that that's pretty much it. At this point, so I'd be I'd be happy to take any uh questions, of course, you know. Certainly, I I'm anxious and and willing to do whatever I can to help preserve this building. It's a beautiful building. And I um I certainly understand that it's a cherished part of uh Northborough's history. So it's not from a lack of uh desire to help with this effort. Um it's uh just concern about what's doing, what what is best in the long run. So I I'm looking for some guidance from you folks as to whether you feel I should go forward with this grant's application. Or whether I should not. I feel that if there is uh the Metro West proposal. It definitely makes the grant application way more competitive. If I'm applying for some unknown use. I don't think we have much of a chance of getting this money. Especially considering the fact that if I apply for a million dollars worth of grant funds. At the end of the million dollars, we will still have. A a building that cannot be used. And we don't have a plan for how we're going to raise the balance of the funds. Nor a timeline and all of those things are required to be submitted. With the grant application, so they do request a detailed pro forma. Um so if it's a ten million dollar project, they want to know. Wh- where we're gonna come up with ten million dollars.
Lori, thank you very much. I appreciate you um putting this together quickly. Um. Couple of questions just uh for myself and open up the rest of the board. Uh my understanding from the presentation earlier that. Um if Metro West goes forward with this, they wouldn't take ownership of the property for another two and a half years. So they'd be doing preparation work for that uh for most of that time and until then. Um one of my concerns is is how much further the building will deteriorate between now and then if we go forward with that project. Um and this is possibly one way to help with that. And seal up the building, um certainly remove the additions. It's raining inside. That's certainly risks deterioration to the part of this. Structure that we want to save. Um and could make could make the problem worse if the roof completely collapses or anything like that in the middle of a rainstorm or or snowstorm. Um the chimneys continue to deteriorate. Obviously, one has has come down. Um so certainly some ceiling of that makes sense and I I agree with you completely about the items that you've addressed because those are. Um in need of protection no matter what. And whether uh the town goes forward with the Metro West proposal. Um or anything else, if that falls through, these things need to get done. So um so in that regard, I think it's it's important to at least give it a try. Um there are a lot of questions unanswered. Obviously, the expression of interest is due in a couple of days and we're just starting this discussion now, so there's not a lot of time. Put together something uh thorough. Um my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is the expression of interest is a is. A pretty short form, a couple of pages and if invited in, the town would learn more about the process. And then um might be offered the opportunity to submit the actual grant application, which is in June and that's where the pro forma would be needed and everything else. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. The expression of interest isn't a heavy lift if if you want me to move forward with the um. The application, then certainly I I feel confident that I'll be able to do that by the Friday deadline. Um the concern, of course, uh the the major things that have to happen after that is obviously getting. Uh quotes, we need to develop a scope of work. Uh like I said, we'll probably need to consult with um. An expert who is familiar with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. So um that we will need their assistance in order to come up with the scope of work. Um and also uh to get the uh the quotes from qualified folks. Who can do the work, so that and then the financial plan. And of course, they 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 want to know what's going on with the property, so. If you, it would be helpful to have the board of selectmen make a decision as to whether you're going forward with Metro West. At least for additional information or whether you're not. Because I will need to explain. The use in the application.
In the June application.
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you, questions for members of the board? Scott.
And remind me again, what initiated this angle, this topic?
So I was asked the question about whether the town should apply for this money in this funding round.
Yeah, so I I received communication from a few members of the public asking about this grant, so I asked. John, who asked Lori to respond, so Lori and I had a couple of email exchanges about this. And this is always within the last week or so.
Yeah, I'm gonna cut to the chase because I'm I'm a little impatient and it's late, this is ingenious. In that taking and executing or trying to execute a high-risk maneuver. That undermines the viable proposal that we have from Metro West. I gotta give you credit, that's this is ingenious, nice, nice maneuver.
Not sure I understand, Scott, I disagree.
You're gonna you're gonna scramble to put together. And and an expression of interest in a couple of days. That then we've got documented in Lori's letter that it undermines the proposal from Metro West. Interesting. Applause, I'd I'd give you a standing ovation. I'd mystified how individually you're going off. On these tangents. And and this, this is why I'm leaving the board. Is these this this maneuvering is is just. I I'm I'm gonna be speechless now, so I you've I've run out of words, so. Congratulations.
Jason. Then then Julian.
It doesn't seem to me to be viable with all the open questions with the deadline and Friday with the very short timeframe between then and June. To put together something that has some semblance of logic and planning. That it makes any sense for us to approve this tonight. Particularly since. Speaking for myself, I didn't have any information about this until it showed up in our packets. And to expect us to provide a complete and. Comprehensive evaluation of the viability of this. In comparison to whatever other proposals there might be isn't is just not reasonable.
Yeah, I only learned about this a few days ago.
And well, that's that's a few days earlier than the rest of us, Mitch and and you know. Whoever you've spoken with and whoever else, whoever the citizens are that have expressed interest. Were concerned about this, it would certainly help the rest of the board members to have all of that information as well.
I I don't think there's any information that I have that isn't in the packet. Thank you, Jason, Julian.
Yeah, and and we had a a very extensive email from. Amy Perezky today who is willing.
That was today, earlier this afternoon, and some of us who work day jobs may not have had sufficient time to digest that before this meeting. I apologize for the interruption, Mr. Chair.
It's fine.
May I continue?
Of course.
So we have a comment of. How somebody, you know, how a group or something is doing an end around. With a perfectly viable proposal. I I question how healthy that proposal is after. Seeing a petition signed by two hundred fifty people and the overwhelming amount of comments have been. They're just, they've just had have had a lot of serious questions about Metro West, so. Right now, we are discussing the the expression of interest. What what would it hurt by submitting that this Friday? Will that allow Lori and whoever else wants to help with this? Would that allow them to have a conversation with one stop and find out? What it will take to to. To have a a good grant application by June or no grant application, what what is the problem with doing? This little tiny interim step?
Scott, take it away.
Yeah, before before I answer, what's the recommendation from our facilities manager?
What, from the facilities manager?
Yeah, whether we should, whether we should pre- proceed with this. Trying to do something on our own.
Wasn't discussed with him.
Right, so we don't have input from the department that's responsible for the facility. So I don't have the information to make a decision.
Scott, to be clear, we we have no, we make the decision tonight or we or we lose the opportunity. The board will have time to dig into the details and hear from the facilities manager if we wish and everything else. Before the June deadline, as Lori said, this is a light lift for the expression of interest. If they turn around and say, great project, we can then consider to. Go forward or we could drop out, or they could just tell us, sorry, you're not, we're not interested in you.
So so what the Julian was asked, what's the harm? The harm is it undermines the proposal of the single. Respondent we got for our work in canvassing. Our broad, trying to find any sort of creative solution for White Cliffs, so it. Harnesses the town to be the sole developer of that property. And it seems like that's the path you want to go down. And that's your decision to make, you're making individual decisions and and going to staff. Without any input from other board members, so be it.
I asked John the question, that's all, Kristen.
So I think. Scott is spinning this into something that it doesn't seem to me that it is, if it's a two-step process. It seems very logical that if we just fill out some paperwork that's due. By Friday and unfortunately, we have to make this decision really quickly, I agree, that's not convenient, but. If we fill up some paperwork and then we. Either figure out that it it's not good for the town to apply for this grant. Or it, you know, it would be problematic in some way that we're not aware of right now completely. There's plenty of time to just say, you know what, we're just, we're we're pulling our. Application or whatever whatever this thing is that the be. This preliminary. Paperwork that Lori would have to fill out, it sounds to me like it's. It's maybe not. A perfect situation either way, but if it's. The the application really isn't due till June anyway, isn't this something that could be revoked or whatever before? That happens, and I I'm actually asking Lori.
Yeah, I mean, this is an expression of interest, so it doesn't bind the town into. Submitting a a full grant application, so essentially what we're saying is that we may. Apply for this grant money, we're filling you out. Want to hear if you think that this is a a good project. And usually what the expression of interest does is it tries to put you in the appropriate pool. Of grants, so the community one-stop consists of. Oh, gosh, I think it's about fifteen different grant programs. So they read through your expression of interest and then they tell you which grant is actually the best fit for your project. So they may say, you know, we don't think it's appropriate for this specific pool of money. We're gonna give you a different pool of money, so. And that can even happen at the full grant application stage. So I have in the past submitted. A couple of different. Grant applications with the community one-stop. And they decided to give me more than I asked for of a specific grant. And none of the other grant that I had asked for. So that they can make those decisions as well within the program.
And do you think it would? You know, or from what you understand, is this hugely problematic if we did decide to go with some. Version of what Metro West. Collaborative, whatever they're called. Is planning, like, I'm certainly not saying I think. Everything about them is terrible and I want nothing to do with them by saying, maybe we should move ahead with this grant, I would. I would like your opinion on that.
So I believe that the most competitive application would involve Metro West.
Right.
So if our application is that we're going to. Apply for this money and we have no idea what we're gonna do with this building. Then I don't think we have a snowball's chance of getting this money.
So. But what if we were applying for your specific? Recommendations in your letter?
If we don't have a use identified, then I don't think that we will. I mean, I may be mistaken. But my approach to the to the, of course, I always like to to get grant money, I like to be successful. And so my approach in this in the expression of interest. Would be to support the Metro West application. So the way that I would phrase the expression of interest is that. I was looking for money to stabilize the building while we work through the Metro West proposal. If that's not something that you want me to do, then I won't do that. But I don't think that we will have nearly as competitive of an application.
Okay, so you you would just like to use the wording that we're working with them on a proposal, basically. And no one's committed to anything either way, we haven't taken a vote, right?
Well, this is just the expression of interest.
Yeah.
I mean, if you decide that you don't want to go forward with. With Metro West, and I know that for the June second meeting. Then, of course, you know, I would have to explain that.
Yeah.
So they, so this application is, you know, is it's not a light lift, it's a heavy lift. They want a lot of information about the proposal, a lot of detail. And typically, you know, I have applied for this grant money for downtown revitalization. And at that point, they wanted, you know, engineer drawings, they wanted. A very detailed cost estimate, they wanted a very detailed timeline of when things are gonna get done, they wanted to know. All the sources of funding. So all of that would need to be ironed out for that June second submittal.
Right.
So if 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 the response is that, you know, we have no timeline and, you know, we have no use. Then I'm I don't know how I'm gonna answer those questions, honestly, and to be, I'm gonna be completely honest. It's a million dollars, so they expect, if you're applying for, you know, ten thousand dollars. Then the level of work is comparable to that. You know, you don't need to provide a lot of detail for a ten thousand dollar grant.
Right, right, right.
If you're asking for a million dollar grant, then they want to know everything.
Okay, so. In your opinion, does it make sense to apply for this grant? If. We don't end up working with Metro West?
I I think. If I'm not gonna be able to answer the questions, then probably it's not gonna be worth it. I mean, we could lower down the ask. So it wouldn't be a million dollar ask, it could be a smaller amount, like maybe just go after chimneys or. Or, you know, maybe the town would have to kick in some money to sweeten the pot. But. Yeah, if I if I can't. If I can't come up with what the use is gonna be, then that's gonna be a big negative.
Okay, thanks for answering all my questions.
One one question, Lori, just to to follow up on some of the discussion already. Does submitting the expressers expression of interest put the Metro West project at risk?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Julianne, did you have your hand up?
So in the expression of interest. You've seen the application, I haven't, I I I don't think I've seen it. Does it say what the future, like, how detailed do you have to get for the future use?
That is the question that they asked, so the the first question. I don't think I brought the the full application here. But the first, the first question is describe your project.
So the project.
The second question is, you know, how much money are you gonna ask for? And then the third question is what's your timeline?
So so, I mean, what what I heard tonight from a lot of our taxpaying residents is that. They they expected. For their taxpayer investment now. Community use there. So I think that that is an honest. Answer to the question number one is. Is community, community use of the house, do you have to get really detailed, like? It's gonna be for arts and culture or it's gonna be for. Seniors or often, like, how detailed do you have to get on this expression of interest?
So they do say in this application. That. That. If you're applying for municipal, so you're a municipal project, some municipally owned. Project. And it's a municipal use. They said that it's not gonna be very competitive, however, if we can prove an economic impact. So essentially, we can demonstrate that this particular use is gonna create jobs. That it is going to, you know, result in a destination. That it's going to enhance the economic, you know, the economic developments, the economic revitalization of the downtown. Then that that is an exception. But if I just submit an application that says. It's just gonna be a community use, an undefined community use. Then chances are there, you know, if I can't point to, you know, a creation of jobs and. How it's going to enhance. Northborough Center, then I don't think that it would be an eligible project. Or a competitive project, I I should say, like, that has to be defined in the grant's application due on June second.
Right, but but not in the expression of interest, you don't have to go into that much detail.
So what I anticipated doing, because the Metro West proposal is still on the table. What I think would be a competitive project is to. Put forward that project and just say that, you know, this is currently under consideration in the town. And it's an affordable housing proposal. And, you know, certainly, the the board of selectmen will. Go forward with some sort of action prior to the application being due in June.
Yeah, I think that I I think that's reasonable, I I, you know, that is. We we heard earlier that to make meet a September town meeting deadline. That we would make need to make a decision a few months prior, that puts us, you know, roughly in the June timeframe that we can. Hopefully make a decision on the Metro West project before the grant application. Hopefully make a decision on the Metro West project before the grant application and um if. You know, if we decide to go forward with it, we just continue on that path with this grant application. If we go some a different direction. Hopefully, we've opened the door and um and can can and can shift gears a little bit with them. But I think if we don't, if we don't try, we don't have a, obviously don't have a shot. I'm sorry, sorry, Jason, you had your hand up for a little bit and then that Scott.
Yes, um, I guess at least two questions. One is. We're potentially, if we submit this um. Statement of interest, doing so from the perspective of potentially working with Metro West. Um, do they need to know about that before we submit this? Or are we just kind of leveraging their credibility as a project developer for the purpose of getting through that step?
I have already discussed this with Caitlin. Because I wanted to know if our more moving forward with this application would have negative ramifications for their project. Should the Board of Selectmen decide to proceed? Um, and that is what I included in my letter and I discussed. So there are some negative ramifications. So they are aware.
Okay, and. Do you have an estimate of? Um, staff time. Expenditures, coordination with whatever. Uh, design and 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 collateral and pro forma that we need to put together for the June date and how realistic is it to? Essentially start from nearly zero. And get all of that together by that date, because it seems to me that. For somebody who would be submitting a statement of interest now, it's because. They're already on a path to do a project that already has some definition and some progress on that material. And we don't seem to be the, in that situation. So my concern is. Uh, what's the drain uh on resources between now and the June date? Considering that we have a lot of transition going on on town government, considering that we have town meeting coming up. Uh, I'm skeptical that. Even if we go forward with the interest right now, it's not a good use of staff time between now and then. Given what I'm hearing as being a relatively low probability. Of getting any funding for anything that we even agree we need to move forward with and do. Among the members of this board.
I probably would need a solid three weeks full time. Uh, in the the preparation of this document. And then Sean, I would need his assistance. Uh, so of course he's. Facility supervisor. Um, so I would need his assistance in securing the um. Estimates. And of course, showing the contractors uh the spaces. And then, of course, there may be a cost um involved with getting advice from the. Historic properties expert. I have no idea what that cost would be.
And that's all for the June deadline, obviously not for the expression of interest, correct? Which is all, all that's before us tonight is the expression of interest.
Correct. So the utilities, of course, would have to be severed into the spaces. Um, so it would be multiple disciplines, obviously a mason for the uh, the chimney. Uh, then there would be uh the utilities, so plumber, electrician. Um, and then, of course, the demo work, and then I would imagine there'd be carpenters that would be involved with. Uh, buttoning up the the building afterwards.
Thanks, Julianne.
Okay, so first of all, um, I think what Mitch said first is really important. If we can get some money to do, you know, to do some of these critical repairs. The chimneys, the root, the taking off the additions. Because no one's gonna touch that building for two years if. If we go with Metro West, which, you know, some people are saying is the only viable idea here. Personally, I do not like submitting this expression of interest with Metro West as the, as the end use. I I think it's just too risky. We, we've heard from a lot of people tonight and. If anything can happen at town meeting and if Metro West gets voted down. That the town doesn't wanna give this property to Metro West, where are we? So my question is this, is it possible to apply for the June second grant? Without ever having done the expression of interest, because at this moment in time, for the vote that we have to do. That seems to be the the holdup. We don't know enough about about how to fill out the expression of interest. Can, can you still apply for the grant without applying for the expression of interest?
Now, the expression of interest is strongly recommended, but not required. So they would, they would give advice based on the expression of interest. So I would rather apply to the expression in of interest than not.
Sorry, go ahead.
I I agree with you there, but I I'm really concerned about. If 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 we fill that out with Metro West as our end goal. And then town meeting tells us something else. And I I just, plus, I think that doing that. Is is this little group of people saying? Yep, Metro West is gonna get another check on this timeline here and and they're gonna be able to move along.
So I.
Any town input, sorry.
I agree with Lori's position that submitting through the expression of interest is the right way to do it. Because that gets you part of the discussion with them and they help you, they they, at that point, they're interested enough. That they want to support a grant application. Um, if they thought it wa- wasn't wasn't valuable, they wouldn't spend the time on it. Um, we might learn something, we might learn something for a grant round now, we might learn something for a grant round in the future. Um, so I I I think it is, and I think we should. Submit a grant app, the expression of interest with the strongest possible case we can to get us to the table. While we work through some of these other things, we have, we have no opportunity to to make a decision now on anything. Other than do we submit an expressive of interest to to open the door to additional discussions on a grant. On a million dollar grant that could move White Cliffs substantially forward, no matter what the conclusion is. Um, one of the things that interests me on this is um, Metro West is asking for eight hundred thousand dollars of town money. My hope is, we can't have this discussion with them for a little while. My hope is, is that if we do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of work. They might say, well, all right, that was eight hundred thousand we didn't need. And I know it's not a one to one because of prevailing wage and everything like that. But that could save us hundreds of thousands of dollars down the road, even if we do go forward with Metro West. I I just think it 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 opens the door to opportunities to save us a lot of money. Okay, eh, sorry, Ja- Jason.
Thank, for purposes of progress in this discussion, somebody needs to construct some language for a motion.
Do have a couple of 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 hands up. Um, and I don't know if we. Lori, I don't, I don't think we need a motion, we don't need a vote from the Board of Selectmen to submit a statement of interest, is that correct?
No, but as some clear direction from you. I mean, like I said, the strongest application in my view includes Metro West. So if you're totally opposed to me doing that, then I I would want some clear direction from you. Otherwise, that is my plan is to uh go forward with the strongest position possible.
Yeah, my my preference is to defer to you as someone who's been through this process before. To submit the strongest possible expression of interest. Um, but uh, we'll we'll let the board. Make that decision. Um, Jason, uh, we've got a couple of hands up I wanna get to before we vote on anything, but Jason, go ahead.
Speaking as someone who some couple of decades ago had my credentials misappropriated. In seeking some kind of benefit like that without my knowledge, I. Am reluctant to submit something that has any mention of Metro West. Unless the intention of this board is to proceed with Metro West.
Um, all right, we've got a couple of hands up um quickly.
One, one more before public comment, so, cuz this is, this will be one of the public comments. Lori, uh, how helpful is Amy's draft of the E O I?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
How helpful to you is Amy's draft of the E O I?
Um, I I would take it in a different direction.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, if you could, uh, Amy Paretzky, if you could quickly identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, thanks, sorry for causing so much uproar tonight. I really um came across this grant a couple um weeks ago and I brought it up and it was a million dollars for. White Cliffs, like we said, who's it, the chimneys are falling down, the rain is pouring in, and I thought, you know. What could hurt going for the million dollars to try to button up this building? I didn't mean to, I'm not trying to. Throw any application off. But um, it's, sorry, it's so late, I'm trying to get my, but as someone who applied for a grant before also, who was told. That I would never get the grant, it went through and it was extra money that helped along a project, so. Why turn down a million dollars? But I, I mean, it might not work, but it's an expression of interest, it's like a two-page document. I actually don't think we should. Pinpoint the expression of interest to Metro West, not that I wanted to derail Metro West at all. But when I read the expression of interest, if you talk about housing, it's gonna send you down a different road for grants versus the. Underutilized blighted building. This is for blight, it's for downtown revitalization, we're in the middle of a downtown revitalization. We have a blighted building that could bring public benefit, it just fit every checkmark of the grant. Um, I think maybe it should be open-ended that it could be either or somehow, but I don't. It's only an expression of interest, like everybody says, and the grant people will say to you. You know, it it fits or it doesn't fit. I went to two classes on it already. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, and they work with you, they're not just gonna throw it out. They'll talk to you and say this doesn't work or it doesn't work and you have to pinpoint it to one or the other. But I really think. It's just the expression of interest, it's not the grant, the grant is June second, and I actually went through the whole grant today. And many of the questions in the grant are answered by the D B V W. They have a whole feasibility analysis that would give you a lot of the pro forma information. Whether it be housing or whether it be. Um, an event space. It just seemed like with White Cliffs being two years off. This grant should have probably been applied for last year, it's been around for a couple of years now. And why are we gonna wait another year and just let it fall apart even more? If we wanted to go out for RFP, it should have been fixed, fixed up to look a little better. And then maybe we'd get more interest. But I'm just hoping we can go forth with this expression of interest. And I would actually, I wouldn't mind helping if anybody would allow it, I'm not trying to derail anything. But I'm willing to help.
Thank you very much, Amy. All right, one more comment, uh, Lisa Micali, you could identify yourself and briefly let us know your comments.
Um, Lisa Micali thirteen Maple Street, thank you for the, thank you for going on this late hour. Um, I'm looking at the twenty twenty-two underutilized property program frequently asked questions. One of them says, if an applicant has underutilized property targeted and approved for affordable housing. Will this program offer help for this type of project? The answer was, if there are other state programs that are our benefit for the project, the project may be referred to the other programs outside of one stop. So I am saying that already here, it's not recommending that you do put in housing or affordable housing. For your uh, letter of interest. I don't understand as a resident and seeing two hundred and fifty people write about their displeasure about how this is all going down. That we should be using our staff and our resources and some of our representatives to be pushing one. Viable. Uh, project, when in fact, you haven't even made that decision and then to say we can't go and start to fix some of these things on this building. That should have been done years ago, doesn't make any sense to me. So I think that we need to get it together and decide that we're not all these gonna work in one direction toward a developer. But we're gonna consider the two hundred and fifty people who wrote in and said, no, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, we got a couple more hands up, Norm Carbon. Later, I'm gonna ask everyone to be brief.
I'll I'll be brief, Norm Corbin thirty-five Whitney Street, just a simple question. Is this grant an annual grant or is it something that's coming up just now? Because is it something that we could delay till next year?
It's an annual grant.
So it could be, it could be considered next year when we have our ducks in a row better, and our situation better known. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm.
Do have one concern, one concern about the the butters. Who, many of whom have signed the petition. Um, so across the planning board received another petition. Having to do with the rezoning of this property, so I had proposed to rezone the property. Uh, to Business East, so a portion of the property is currently located in Business East. But the historic building itself is located in Residential C. And um, the only uses that are allowed within the Residential C district. Are single-family homes, duplexes, assisted living, bed and breakfast. And then the institutional uses such as a church or school. Um, so that we received a petition to the planning board relative to that rezoning. Where these same folks who are not in support of an affordable housing development are also not in support of. Any sort of business use either. So I suspect that a large number of these people don't wanna see anything up there. So whether it's business or whether it's residential, it doesn't matter. Um, so I have that concern and of course, the. Planning board voted that 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 article will not be on the warrant. Um, so as the property is currently zoned, business is not allowed, including an event venue.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Um, all right, I'm gonna bring in Todd Helwig, um, who hasn't spoken yet. And I think I'm gonna cap it on this so we can um, uh, decide what we're gonna do here and decide what we're gonna do with the rest of our meeting. Uh, Todd, you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Sure, Todd Helwig, four four one Howard Street, I apologize in advance. Uh, this straight, a whole conversation streaks, strikes me as being unfair to Lori and her time. It's unfair to whoever's reviewing this at the Commonwealth. It makes us look like a clown show by even putting this forth like this. And if you, we need money and you will need money, I agree with that, go back to the CPC. They've always known that we were gonna be getting further quests for money for this project. Based on the fact when we undertook the vote originally, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Um, all right, I I I'm gonna ask that um, that the attendees who um, haven't spoken up yet in this. Or want to speak again, be respectful of our time and and uh, let let's just make a decision on this, this is on the expression of interest. I'll entertain a motion or I'll entertain no motion at all if we, if we don't wanna go forward.
I, I'm kind of leaning towards the point that Norm brought up. If this is a grant that comes up every year. As much as I hate, would hate to pass it up for this year, I think that that will have a better sense of. Um, of the vi- the true viability of Metro West at at that, at this time next year. And um. And and probably a better application if we, if we have the time to do it, right? And, and probably a better application if we, if we have the time to do it, right?
Additional thoughts? Christian.
In the meantime. We have enough money to maybe not. Uh, repair chimneys and tear down leaking buildings, but we have enough money to keep the. Beautiful part of the building relatively safe. I mean. I, I, um, I like the idea of the grant, but I see their problems with it and I don't want to. At this late hour, um, mess anything up and. I just want to know that the. The building itself, the White Cliffs Mansion. I don't know, it's some, somehow it feels like. If we don't make a certain decision right now, the building's going to collapse and that's not the case, right? Like, there's no reason to think that. So. Um, the idea that there could be a million dollars coming relatively soon. And we could be missing out on that. That's something that we have to acknowledge right now. Um, but. I understand it's very complicated for lots of reasons. So, um. And I would like also to point out, there was never any intentional. Um. Trying to sabotage any program.
Thank you, Christian.
It's just a grant and it was just money that we were talking about the whole time. So, yeah, so that's fine. I, I don't really want to make a motion either.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm assuming from prior comments that, uh, Scott and Jason aren't interested in making a motion to. Apply for this grant.
I'll make a motion not to apply for it if you want.
I, we, we don't, we don't need that. All right, I'm hearing consensus to not submit for the expression of interest. Um, I appreciate everyone's indulgence on this, given that this came up obviously at the last hour. It was an opportunity to, to discuss and considering, uh, uh, getting a grant. But I, I agree that it's, uh, it's, it's risky. Um, from my perspective, the biggest concern would be if we go forward, three weeks of Laurie's. Time is incredibly valuable and very, very important. So, um, so I'm okay with the consensus here. Um, we'll have a lot more to discuss, obviously about the Metro West project in the future, but at this point, the town, uh, the town's behalf is not going to be submitting the expression of interest. Does that provide the clarity you're looking for, Laurie?
It sure does. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to make a suggestion, given that it's eleven thirty-four P M and we have a couple of, uh. Major items left on our, our agenda. We knew that the White Cliffs discussion would take a long time. Um, it did take a long time. Um, John, is there anything that we need, we must act on tonight? We have a special meeting that we had already scheduled for, uh, for Thursday evening primarily to, um. To interview candidates for a search committee. We could potentially add a couple of things to that if we needed to. Give us some, some direction, sir.
Uh, we've already posted the agenda today for that meeting.
Oh, you did already. Uh, you could have time tomorrow.
I'm sorry, the agenda we posted tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, I would close the warrant tonight. That should get done this evening. Um, we can have a discussion about the senior tax deferral. Jason Little, who's been hanging on till almost midnight here.
I know, I've, I've noticed that.
Uh, we, we do need, we do need the executive session. Those things cannot wait.
Okay, all right, let's, um, let's go forward and if, if the board's okay with it, let's. Quickly go through closing the, the warrant and, um, obviously we can ask questions about, uh.
There's, there's nothing to deliberate on. You're just closing the warrant. So the articles that are on there in, in the warrant. Can get finished being fully developed and go to town council and get, get wrapped up. So.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, is the board okay going forward with, uh, with that process? Yeah, yes, all right, all right. So, um, we're moving on to the, um, we're going to skip, let's see. All right, so the forty-one A item, I, our number seven, we're going to skip for the evening and we will come back to that, Jason Little. I'm very sorry and thank you very much. Um, closing the town meeting warrant, would someone like to make a motion to close the town meeting warrant or any other motion thereof?
Just a quick question on that is that, uh, we've got then the amended language that I think isn't in the package that the public is seeing. On the one article, is that right, John? We, we fix the language on the revolving fund, right?
The, the point is really all you're doing is saying, these are the articles. Really, I, I did need to give you more than just a listing of the articles. You're saying warrants closed, these are the articles that are going to move forward and then they get developed. But we're trying to give you as much information as we can. Still a lot of missions and language to, 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 to be done, but, but those are the articles. Yeah, there was the, the, you're referring to the. The Health Department of Evolving Fund, there was a hiccup where some language came forward, that'll get cleaned up.
Yeah, that's basically. Yeah, based on that, I move, I move the board vote to close the town meeting warrant.
Second. Okay, motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any discussion?
So basically what we're voting on is just that no other articles can come forward now.
Right, the closing warrant.
We could, we could conceivably reopen it and add in, but I, I, I don't see any others coming.
Okay, but then my vote is yes. Close the war.
Okay, we haven't asked for votes yet. So, all right, all right, um, all those, all those in favor. Julianne, how do you vote? Jason.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous and favor warrant is closed. Thank you very much. Um. Are members of the board okay dispensing of reports for this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Scott, I didn't see a nod either way from you.
All right, yes, we'll, we'll cover it at our next meeting.
We, we absolutely will.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I'm wondering, we're right here on the threshold. We have recommendations for committee appointments. Uh, should we just go ahead and make those motions and execute those?
Those are quick, yeah.
Yep, I'm fine. Um, I think, uh, Julianne, you would, you would volunteered for that and if you wish, you can make them as one bulk motion. I think that's acceptable.
Oh, okay, all right. I move the board vote to appoint Diane Irvine to the Scholarship Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. As recommended by the interview subcommittee. I also move the board vote to appoint Paula Moore and Ellison King to the Council on Aging. For terms to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the interview subcommittee. I also move the board vote to appoint Jennifer Martin to the Community Affairs Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth. Twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, Scott?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Jason?
Bye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much to, uh, to all those who volunteered and congratulations. Now I will, um, I'm also going to, um, at the risk of, uh. Of a lot of people that are still online, I'm going to skip the public comment for this evening. We've obviously had tremendous public comments and we will have. More in the future and I will entertain a motion for executive session.
Yes, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one subsection three to discuss collective bargaining strategy and negotiations with the firefighter union and patrol union memorandum of agreement. And subsection six to consider the purchase and value of real property, the land and buildings at four West Main Street. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the board.
Second.
Motion's been made by Scott, seconded by Jason. All those in favor, uh, Kristen?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. We are going into executive session at eleven forty P M to not return to public session. Thank you very much, everybody.